It looks like we've got a full board. Let me go ahead and ask, Ms. Vogel, will you call Roe for me, please? I'll call the meeting to order and ask you to call Roe.
Robert Byrd.
Present.
Alma Cortez.
Present.
Barbara Ferrer.
Present.
Winnie Wexler.
Present.
Abigail Marquez. Summer McBride.
Present.
Lisa White Crow.
Present.
Kara Segala.
Present.
Deanne Tilton Durfee.
Here.
Jaclyn McCroskey.
Here.
Alejandra Alvaron Moses.
Here.
Marcella Ramirez.
Here.
And Holly Mitchell.
Present.
Coram is present.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. I see that we have no AB 2449 remote request for this meeting. And with that, we can go ahead and move to Agenda Item 3, which is an information item on the report back from today's closed session. Let me hand this over to Counsel. Ms. Young.
Yes, Chair, yes. So the Board was just in a closed session related to conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 5495, 7.6. There was discussion amongst the Board, but no reportable action was taken.
Excellent, thank you. Do we have any public comment on Agenda Item Number 3?
Confirming there are no public comments on this item.
Beautiful. We're going to proceed on. Let me get my papers in order here. The next item is our consent agenda. I believe we've got a few comments on this item from staff. Let's go ahead and hear from staff. Hey, JR.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, thank you Supervisor. Good afternoon Commissioners, I'm going to briefly touch on Item 4D on the agenda about approval of our annual audit, which was already reviewed in detail in the special meeting of the Board of Commissioners Program Planning Budget and Finance and Executive Committee on September 25th. This brief is needed to document in our Board meeting minutes today. As part of our fiscal year 2425 closeout, we completed the required audit under the California Children and Family Act Prop 10, following the state and audit standards. At the September 25th meeting, the independent auditors, I D Bailey, did identify a procedural compliance finding associated with complying to our internal policies. To address this finding, there is a corrective action in place to revise these policies and procedures. Board, rest assured, the finding did not impact our financial statements, nor required any adjustments to our financial statements. The audit overall has still resulted in a clean audit. So Board, thank you for hearing this, as it's again needed to document our Board meeting minutes today. It also reflects our commitment to transparency, accountability, and responsible stewardship of our public funds.
Thank you very much. Any Commissioner comments on the consent agenda? Let's go ahead and have public comment, if there's any, on Agenda Item Number 4, Consent Calendar.
Confirming there are no public comments on this item.
Thank you. With that, can we go ahead and call Roe?
Robert Byrd.
Yes.
Alma Cortez.
Yes.
Barbara Ferrer.
Yes.
Winnie Wexler.
Yes.
Abigail Marquez.
Yes.
Summer McBride.
Yes.
Lisa White Crow.
Yes.
Kara Segala.
Yes.
And Holly Mitchell.
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Thank you very much. Going to proceed all to Agenda Item Number 5, remarks by Commission Chair. I'm going to start with some good news. First of all, would you all join me in congratulating my staffer? She's an old married woman since you saw her last time. She had a big fabulous wedding. Congratulations. You know, old married woman is like a term of endearment, you know that. Right, right, right. She's a married woman. I would be an old married woman, she's a married woman. It's my word. Happy Hispanic Heritage Month to all. There are only a few days left, but it's important that we continue to celebrate a community that we honor and pay homage to here in LA County, particularly given what many in the Hispanic community are facing in these last several months. I just have to share with you an experience I had. DCFS, for 11 years now, holds a quinceañera for girls in their care. And I don't know about you, but I'm looking for joy wherever I can find it. And for me, it was such a wonderful experience on multiple levels, the fact that DCFS honors culture and cultural values and mores, and that DCFS staff poured into that quinceañera what I saw. It was like any quinceañera you've ever seen. I want to, you know, there are private entities that sponsor and contribute. I've always wanted one of those hoop skirts and never had an opportunity to have one, and I have committed that the next year when I go, I'm going to get me a hoop skirt at 62. Yeah, I'm going to have a hoop skirt. But I was able to spend a little time. It was, you know, beauty and pain. There were two young women who opted not to participate out of fear that their families might be impacted by ICE in their effort to attend. Took my breath away. And that the young women who did talked about truly what the day made them feel, understanding what it symbolizes, but what the day and the fact that the community showed up to support them, that this supervisor, and I'm not quite sure why everybody was excited that I was there, because who is she anyway? But then I got all excited over them, was like confusing, I'm sure. But for me, particularly now, it was just wonderful to be a member of the county family that gets it, although their social workers were there, the entire family, their birth families and their DCFS families, if you will, to bear witness to this transition. And it had all of the accoutrement of a quinceañera. It was off the chain. So I just wanted to share that with you, because like I said, I personally am looking for joy anyplace I can find it, and that was a beautiful symbol of when government chooses to show up in a way that affirms young people, we have the capacity to do so. So I want to just acknowledge that and talk about how special that was. Now that I've shared the good news, this past Board meeting, the Board of Supervisors had an update on what the federal shutdown will have on the county. And while we spent so much time talking about the impact of HR1 and some of the executive policies, the work shutdown has really an immediate impact. We heard from department heads and recognized that how programs such as CalFresh, SNAP, WIC, Section 8, you know, Section 8 vouchers, if the work shutdown, if the shutdown doesn't end by October 25th, November 1, Section 8 vouchers will be impacted. Public housing, operating fund, public health programs, pending grant applications, all of those things are impacted. You know, we all saw TSA shut down an airport this past week by not showing up. There are some that have been carved out that will be protected, many of the veterans' benefits, Social Security, but it's a shorter list than the government programs that will be negatively impacted. And we heard from our own department heads, and the CEOs provided the Board with a list of what those potential impacts will be. And so, you know, given the district I represent, given the child poverty rate in the second district, given the poverty rate across the Board in the second district, I am deeply troubled about what this will do to our family, friends, and neighbors that call LA County home. And so I know that, you know, we here on the Board are concerned with the 0-5 population, and we know that it is a segment of our county who will be disproportionately impacted by all these programs. You know, the Section 8 recipient mother, who may also be a CalWorks, SNAP, subsidized childcare beneficiary, she will be disproportionately hit because all of those programs will be affected. So we have work to do, particularly on behalf of our youngest shared constituency, but needless to say, I'm deeply worried. Yes, there have been federal shutdowns before. I had colleagues in the Board that talked about it when they were in, when they were sitting members of Congress. I think for me, it's the cumulative effect, that on top of HR1, on top of the executive orders, that really makes this unique and all the more troubling and frankly devastating. I think at the same Board meeting, I'll just remind us all that there will be a special election November 4th. We heard from the Registrar that they are ready and able to make that election happen. That's all I'll say about that. Questions anyone has of me with my both uplifting and reality-based report? Okay, any public comment on Agenda Item Number 5?
Confirming there are no public comments on this item.
Thank you very much. Let's move on, it was informational only. Let's move on to Agenda Item Number 6, and to hear from our First 5 LA Executive Director.
Thank you so much, Chair, and thank you so much for those comments. I will share a little bit of joy, you know, Halloween is coming up.
Yes, my favorite.
And someone could dress up as a quinceañera. Yes, yes, yes.
Don't put it past me.
And I will pick up where the Chair left off in regards to the government shutdown. Agree that there has been government shutdowns before, but we have been experiencing crisis after crisis, and it's crisis that's manufactured for children and families that have all the impacts that you were lifting up, Chair. It's been nine long months, and something like this did not have to happen. It's being manufactured. So what we are seeing is this dynamic play out, and we're seeing that who it impacts over and over again are the very children and families that did not make some of these decisions. I will not repeat some of the programs that the Chair has mentioned that will be impacted. I will add one more on what the furloughs have meant. So the Department of Health and Human Services furloughed over 700 employees from the Administration for Children and Families. This is the administration that focuses on Head Start, that focuses on childcare issues, that focuses on preschool development block grants. So basically, this program is non-existent right now. So as our Head Start partners are looking to get some answers or to actually spend the money that's already been allocated, they're being told, no, we have to wait. And by default, that means these fundings are not going to families and will be returned to government. So it's a vicious cycle that will really stop a lot of programs and services for families. But I think in times like this, we really have to ask, so how do we show up in this moment? Because we're all really going to be needed in this moment. And for First 5 LA, we are offering a stretch role for us in this moment, and I'll offer three things that you'll hear more about later in the presentation on the Strategic Plan. First and foremost, we're really focused on the urgent and stabilizing, and at least working with our grantees to make sure that the families they are serving do not see the disruptions. We've been clear, we cannot do all direct services, but at least with the grantees that we are currently partnering with, we want to make sure that we're stabilizing their funding so that they can help families. Secondly, we're working on aligning and amplifying our work. We do not want to duplicate any work, and we want to be at tables where we collaborate on issues that you will hear more about. And then lastly, I do want to be really clear that we have to shape the future. We've had many conversations with Board members here, and we could focus on the urgent, and we should, and we need to think about what it's going to take to build back after all of this is done. So you'll hear more about this at the presentation on the Strategic Plan. So today, you will hear about some of the work that we are doing now, some of the work that we're thinking about for the future, and we will open a dialogue with the Board to see, does that make sense? Is that where the Board sees the right direction for First 5 LA? So with that, Chair, I will turn it back to you.
Thank you very much. Any Board member comments or questions? Seeing none, any public comment? On the Executive Director's report.
Confirming there are no public comments on this item.
Thank you very much. Again, it was informational. And now, we will proceed to Agenda Item Number 7. Wait, am I saying that right? My printer ran out of ink, I'm trying to see here. Let's go on to Agenda Item Number 7. We're going to get a report from Diana, Director of Family Supports. And action, am I correct here? We're going to receive funds from LA Healthcare to support Welcome Baby Services. We have to approve Resolution Number 202502.
Madam Chair, if I may add, this is a written-only item. The Board can review the materials that have been provided. There will be no presentation, and this will come back for action at a subsequent Board meeting in November.
Excellent, okay, so that's for Agenda Item Number 7?
That is correct.
Perfect. And so we don't have to take any action?
No action needed.
Do we need to offer public comment on Agenda Item Number 7?
Yes, and I am confirming. There are no public comments.
Okay, we're going to move on to Agenda Item Number 8. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Agenda Item Number 8 is our annual records disposition, which is a very important issue, given what the county is facing right now.
Good afternoon Commissioners. As a public agency, First 5 LA is required to follow a records management and disposition policy for the proper retention and disposal of First 5 LA records. This is a best practice and addresses risk management for the organization and management of its old records, but it also addresses reducing costs associated with keeping records on file. This responsibility does fall under operations, specifically under information technology. So I'm pleased to introduce Jasmine Frost, who is our Director of IT. Her team actually does a lot of the behind-the-scenes effort of all the audio visuals you see here through all the Board meetings in conjunction with Board Relations. And I'm pleased to introduce Dana Schacter, our Records and Enterprise Content Management Specialist. So with that, I will turn it over to Jasmine.
Thank you, JR. Good afternoon, Chair, and Members of the Board. Jasmine Frost, IT Director. Just building upon what JR just mentioned and providing some historical context, the records management function moved under the IT Department after 2019. Since then, we have prioritized our records and information management, focusing on mitigating risks and costs while continuously improving how we monitor our digital and physical records. Our records retention and destruction policy and the records retention schedule were recently updated and approved by the Board at the May 9th meeting last year. It is best practice for all organizations to follow a records retention schedule by regularly reviewing and disposing of records. First 5 LA's process includes three rigorous levels of review. First, with our Records and Enterprise Content Specialist. Next, by the subject matter experts in the concerned teams. And the final review and sign-off is conducted by our legal counsel and CEO President. This multi-level approach ensures that we meet all our legal obligations and mitigate risks associated with holding on to records for too long. Additionally, it also, as JR mentioned, allows us to reduce the amount we spend on both physical and digital storage. The final step in our process is approval by this Board. Today, we are presenting this item as information only. At the November Board meeting, we will bring it back for your vote of approval to dispose off the records listed in the reports that have been provided to you. With that, I'm happy to pass it on to Dana Schacter, our Records and Enterprise Content Specialist, who will provide more detail on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Good afternoon. So records management is part of the life cycle of information. It belongs with the, it begins with the creation, use, and storage of records. After they are no longer actively used, they are securely stored and retained until they have reached the retention limit. Our records retention schedule tells us how long to retain records based on California laws and regulations. Once the records have reached their limit, we begin the disposition review cycle. This slide shows the number of records disposed of in the last three annual dispositions. There is no disposition in fiscal year 2324, because that is when we are updating our schedule. The numbers shown here for the current fiscal year are the expected total if approved by the Board. Fiscal year 202021 was the first year that we disposed of digital records for the Contracts Department and Finance Teams in the Enterprise Content Management System. This is why the amount is so high, and we disposed of this backlog back in fiscal year For your convenience, we've attached our records retention schedule and records retention and destruction policy. There are also five records review reports. The Contract Administration and Purchasing Department has four reports. One is for declined applicants, and those are the records from organizations that submitted bids for RFPs and RFQs but were not chosen. The pools are records from organizations that were part of a vendor pool for services such as translation. The digital records are all of those other contracting documents that are, that do not fall under pools and declined applicants, but that are in our digital system. And the Finance Department has been combined into one report of both physical and digital And that's it. Does anyone have any questions?
Fabulous, seeing no questions. Can we go ahead and open it up for public comment?
Confirming there are no public comments on this item.
And this is informational only, no need for a vote. Thank you very much. Let's move on to Agenda Item Number 9. Colleagues, this will require action on our part, and it's our public hearing to approve the submission of our First 5 LA Annual Report to First 5 California. Is it me, or did it feel like we just did that?
We did it in September, and you're getting a second round of action.
Okay, I was about to say, that couldn't have been a year ago. I feel like I just had this conversation. All right. We'll go ahead and hear the presentation. And this is actually a public hearing requirement as well.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon Commissioners. My name is Kimberly Hall, the Director of Impact and Accountability here at First 5 LA, and I'm accompanied by my colleague, Hadi Kimhan. Hadi is going to be presenting to you all today First 5 LA's Annual Report to First 5 California. This is something that we do annually in adherence to Prop 10 funding requirements. So with that, I'm just going to hand it off to Hadi to get us started.
Good afternoon, everyone. Yes, we were here in September.
I'm sorry, I just thought.
It wasn't me, it was another colleague.
That couldn't have been a year ago. I actually feel better now that you, that I now know that I'm not going completely crazy.
Yeah, we were also here in June, I believe, for First 5 California Report, but today we're focusing on First 5 LA's Report.
Got you.
To First 5 California. The purpose of this public hearing is to share the final report findings and request authorization from the Board to submit the report to First 5 California. So the objectives of today, I'll begin with an overview of the annual report, and then transition to a review of the financial data. From there, I'll summarize our county highlights and evaluations before going into our next steps. So as you know, First 5 Commissions are funded through Prop 10, and one of the funding requirements of this legislation is submitting an annual report to First 5 California. The structure and the type of data that we need to report has already been pre-established by First 5 California. So each county annual report has three sections as outlined on this slide. A summary on revenue expenditures, data on populations reached and demographics, and also a summary of evaluation conducted, and our key county highlights. So details about all three sections are included in the memo and in Attachment 1, First 5 LA's Fiscal Year 2425 Annual Report. In September, we share findings about the populations reached and demographics. Today, I'll focus on Section 1 and 3 of the annual report. So I'll start off by summarizing the data related to revenue and expenditures that aligns with the financial audit, which you can reference in Item 4D of the consent item. In fiscal year 2425, our revenue was around $68 million, expenditures around $88 million. This resulted in a net decrease of our fund balance of around $12 million, making our ending fund balance to around $256 million. So I will now share Section 3 of the annual report, which focuses on key accomplishments and evaluation activities. The county highlights captures First 5 LA's collaborative work with its partners to ensure that every child is born healthy and thrives in a nurturing, safe, and loving community. Here are a couple of illustrations of what First 5 LA highlighted to a report to the State. For fiscal year 2425, First 5 LA funded organizations to respond to emergencies such as the wildfires and the immigration raids. We worked with partners like El Nido Family Centers and Home Visiting Grantees to swiftly provide support to over 330 families with basic needs supports like food, diapers, rent assistance, and baby gear. In addition, the highlights include First 5 LA's efforts to develop the Building Brighter Futures Index to use as a tool to advance equity and make decisions about future investments by directing our resources towards improving the well-being of young children and their families, and prioritizing communities experiencing the greatest inequities. You'll hear more about how we will put Equity Index into action in the following item. Fiscal year 2425 Evaluation Summary included findings from the Help Me Grow LA Pathways, Best Start Learning Agenda, and the Early Childhood Policy and Advocacy Fund. As I mentioned, additional information on all three sections are detailed in Attachment 1, First 5 LA's Fiscal Year 2425 Annual Report. So our meeting next step is to receive submission approval from the Board today. We will then submit the report through the First 5 California's data system by the October 31st deadline. And then I also want to acknowledge my First 5 LA colleagues and partners for their collaboration and collecting data for this org-wide effort in the annual reporting to the State. So with that, I wanted to end this presentation with another piece of joy. This is my almost six-month-old daughter. Her name is Joy, and she's with her grandma at home right now. And so, just thank you so much, and I will pass it over to Chair Mitchell.
I just got chills looking at her. I mean, literally, I have chills. I have chills looking at her. Thank you for including Joy in our slideshow.
Thank you.
It's extraordinary. Questions you have of Joy? Because Joy looks like she will have the answers. Questions, anyone, on the report? Okay, let's go ahead and open up for public comments on Agenda Item Number 9, our First 5 LA Annual Report to First 5.
Confirming there are no public comments on this item.
So the public hearing is now officially closed. Thank you very much. We'll move on to our next agenda item. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the presentation.
Madam Chair, there is an action on this, so if I may get a motion and a second, and I'll do roll call.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to accept. It's been moved by Dr. Ferrer, seconded by Director Segala. All those--
And Chair, just to clarify, not only just to accept but also to approve and direct staff to submit the report to First Five California.
Okay, such will be the motion.
So moved.
Beautiful, and we have a second. Please call the roll.
Robert Bird.
Yes.
Alma Cortez.
Yes.
Barbara Ferrer.
Yes.
Winnie Wexler.
Yes.
Abigail Marquez.
Yes.
Summer McBride.
Yes.
Lisa Whitecrow.
Yes.
Carol Segala.
Yes.
And Holly Mitchell.
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Thank you. I'm going to blame Joy for getting me all discombobulated and not knowing where I was in my agenda. Thank you. All right, colleagues, agenda item 10. This is an information item on our Equity Index and Action, and we're going to turn it over to staff for the presentation. Look at these-- oh, yes. You also could have just swapped the name badge. Far be it from me to tell you how to present. Take it away, Hadi.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Aurea Montez Rodriguez, Vice President of Community Engagement and Policy, and I am pleased-- or we are pleased to share with you an update on the Building Brighter Futures Equity Index. I am joined by Kim Hall, our Director of Impact and Accountability, and we did not coordinate colors today.
Oh, that's funny.
This is what happens when you work together a lot. John Kim, Presidency of Catalyst California, and Chris Ringwald, Senior Research Director at Catalyst. For today's presentation, we are doing-- sharing an update on the Equity Index. We shared with you the Equity Index in the May board meeting, and we shared at that time that we would be evolving the index and coming back at this meeting to share our progress. So today's presentation will walk through why we're revisiting high-need areas, what's changing in our communities, and how First Five L.A. is evolving this approach. We'll also place this work in the broader context and then spend time with you on input and discussion. In alignment with our 2024-2029 strategic plan, as well as the changes in the federal landscape, our long-term financial plan, and the Equity Index for Early Childhood-- oh, excuse me, the Equity Index is a tool to help us target our investments. We are looking at highest and high-need areas because of our fiscal reality. This means tough decisions will have to be made, and your input today will help guide our work to prepare so that we can effectively center families with children prenatal to age five in high-need communities in all decisions. Today's presentation, as the chair said, is informational on the process we've undertaken to evolve the community's model. We're not asking for any decisions today, but we do want your input, and we'll come back to the board with recommendations about future work and investments. Important historical context that I want to help ground us in for today's conversation is in 2010, First Five L.A. selected 14 Best Start communities through a data-driven process that identified high-need areas, assessed community capacity through stakeholder engagement, and ensured geographic and economic diversity across L.A. County's five supervisory districts. Then in 2018, First Five L.A. shifted its focus on supporting these local partnerships to coalesce around five regional networks with local network support, promoting learning within the 14 Best Start communities, and to increase their capacity to achieve broader systems and policy changes focused on their priority results. Most recently, in 2024, we began the next phase of the community's model. At the May 2024 board meeting, staff highlighted overall learnings and challenges from Best Start with the goal of informing future opportunities to better align First Five L.A.'s resources with the new 2024-2029 strategic plan. Additionally, through the implementation priorities work that JR will-- that JR referenced, we're going to-- we initiated-- and we have initiated an evaluation of Best Start and look forward to sharing updates on that work in the next two board meetings. Lastly, today's presentation will lightly touch on the groundwork for a network of hubs model to expand families' access to safety net, housing, and culturally-affirming services while generating data and efforts to drive policy and systems change. And, you know, this is really speaking to the opening of our chair and our president in terms of work that we have been doing, work that is needed at this time, and also future work. And this is important for First Five L.A. because while many of our Best Start communities are still in what we call high-need areas, there are a number of high-need communities where we don't currently have a presence as First Five L.A. So why revisit high-need areas now? We want to start by grounding today's conversation in our reality. There are 525,000 children in L.A. County. Out of the 58 First Five Counties in the state, we are the largest county serving families with children prenatal to age five. At the same time, the board has been clear in directing us to lead with an equity lens, to stay focused geographically where the need is the greatest in the intersection of racial, income, and geographic disparities. This work is central to our strategic plan. Accordingly, reassessing the need-- high-need areas ensures that our limited resources are aligned with our strategic priorities and directed where they can make the greatest impact, especially in light of declining revenue and our long-term financial plan. Our dual goal today is to make the case for why it's time to revisit how we define high-need areas and share the approach that we'll be using to reassess so that your input can guide us. We have allocated time for discussion at the end of this presentation, so with this, I'll turn it over to Kim. Thank you.
Thank you, Aurea. So I'd like to build on what Aurea just shared about why it's time to revisit high-need areas. So as you see, this slide shows us where young children live today across Los Angeles County. So this map itself is a current snapshot. It doesn't show us the change over time, but the bullet points on the right highlight examples of where we've seen increases and decreases in the number of young children since the Best Start geographies were selected more than a decade ago. So the dark purple areas on this map indicate where there are large numbers of children under age five, and several of those areas are also outlined in red. The red denotes our Best Start communities. These areas have historically had and continue to have large populations of young children. At the same time, we're seeing that young children-- we're seeing more young children in places like Grand Mercy Park, Manchester Square, and areas in and around Palmdale, including some areas that are outside our current Best Start boundaries. These examples remind us that the geography of early childhood is not static, even as our investments-- our investment areas have largely remained the same. They underscore why it's important for us to periodically reassess where resources are most needed, which brings us to how communities themselves are changing. So the changes that we just saw reflect broader shifts happening across the county. Families with young children are moving farther east and north, often to the Antelope Valley and to San Bernardino County, and they're doing this as housing costs rise and redevelopment reshapes neighborhoods like South L.A. and Inglewood. These pressures influence who can afford to stay, where children are growing up, and how community demographics are evolving. At the same time, we see the service landscape changing. Transitional kindergarten expansion is reshaping the early learning system, as well as options for families, and we see systems like maternal and pediatric care as well as mental health under strain. So these factors don't exist within isolation. They're deeply connected to child and family well-being, from whether parents can afford early care and to whether families are stable enough to remain in the same communities over time. So taken together, these patterns reinforce why First Five L.A. must periodically revisit where and how we concentrate our resources. We need to both understand the demographic shifts and the structural inequities that are shaping them, and that's where the Equity Index comes in. So the Building Brighter Futures Equity Index is a tool that provides a countywide, point-in-time snapshot of how conditions of well-being differ across communities. The conditions listed here are aspects of well-being that are the focus of our strategic plan and what we assess through the Equity Index in order to identify which areas experience the greatest structural inequities. For now, the Equity Index is an internal tool that would help us ensure that future decisions are grounded in data, equity, and aligned with our strategic plan. This slide provides a glimpse into the approach we'll implement in the communities that are identified through the Equity Index. So our goal is really to evolve our place-based work into a more integrated and community-rooted model. So while the Equity Index helps to guide where we focus, this hub approach will define how we work within those areas. We envision these hubs as no wrong-door access points for families, trusted community-based spaces that connect families to services, resources, and relationships that strengthen their well-being. At the same time, we're going to align our investments by mapping where our current and future efforts overlap with the areas of greatest need, as well as with existing county and community partners. And we'll strengthen connections through innovation funds, advocacy partnerships, and sustainability strategies that help scale and sustain this work over time. In short, the hub model represents the next evolution of our place-based work, ensuring that our work remains responsive, equitable, and deeply connected to the communities we serve. While we're still designing this next phase, it's important to keep in mind that these local shifts are also part of broader trends that are shaping families and communities. To help put that in perspective, I'll now turn it over to John Kim, who will share more about these broader trends and what they mean for our work moving forward.
Excellent, thank you. Morning or afternoon, everybody. I believe the last time we spoke to this commission was in May, and I got to say, a lot has shifted since then for the country and particularly for Los Angeles. So I do appreciate your stalwart leadership in having us here again today. So let me just start with this. You know, I think it's extraordinarily difficult in a moment like this to understand what our new assignment is. As an organizational leader, as a partner and board member for philanthropy, and as a co-convenor for critical coalitions across the state, it's been very difficult to clearly understand the new assignment, given all the chaos of this moment. I am not shy in stating as often and as clearly as I can that I no longer think that the question is whether or when we'll fall into competitive authoritarianism. I think that the question is, how long and how bad will it get? Will it last for just a few months, a few years, or for a generation? It's not easy to say, and even harder, therefore, to figure out what we, at any given moment, need to be focused on. It's like every day, as soon as you set some new strategy or tactics, you go home, read the news, and everything's blown out of the water, and you have to rethink everything yet again. More importantly, though, than that, the real pain and hurt is absolutely exploding in communities all around this county. The immigration raids are, of course-- there's the impact of those that were unjustly detained and disappeared from our communities and the families that were left behind. The communities that were impacted by this federal invasion also are now constantly living in fear and are still-- many are still hiding deeply underground. In June, shortly after we gave this last talk or had this last moment with you all, a coalition that we were part of immediately organized after the invasion began to move into communities where they saw heightened raids, to provide mutual aid, support, and ongoing organizing to support and protect these communities. One story I'll share is an organizer on the ground shared that she saw an eight-year-old carrying about, like, four or five boxes of pizza down the street one evening. And, you know, when they stopped and asked if they needed anything, it was because that eight-year-old was the only one that had papers for the whole family and felt comfortable and careful enough to be able to go out to get food for everybody. You put on top of that H.R. 1, that big nonsense bill that was passed, which will not only rip away healthcare and food away from millions of Californians, it will unleash a wave of mass poverty that I don't think we could truly conceive of right now. All the while, job opportunities are shrinking, hours are being cut, and the cost of basic goods are skyrocketing. And then, of course, there's our democratic institutions and our democratic notion of who we are as a country, and our democracy has become more bloodsport than process, to be real. The general chaos and noise out of D.C. is turning just about everybody off, and I worry that the sanctity of our vote will be challenged in this special election and the upcoming midterm elections as well. But there is unfortunately a harder truth than that. The impacts of all of these things are not evenly felt in our region. There are some communities, many communities actually, that if they don't watch the news or they're not spending their time doom-scrolling, they will not-- these impacts will not come into their daily consciousness. They-- to them, the Dodgers are on game four, TikTok keeps on ticking, and their daily lives sort of putter along, and it is a very odd cognitive dissonance that many swim in every day. But the harder truth than that is that these brutal impacts, all of them, will be weighed in a compounded, laser-like fashion on the same communities that have endured harsh disinvestment, polluting, and deprivation for generations. The hurt is uneven, but unfortunately, the playbook is still the same for so many of these communities, and it's only going to get worse for them. All the while, our ecosystem, we look at our larger ecosystem, those who fight every day for equity, justice, and the common good, all of us here and throughout community groups, philanthropy, and government, all of us have seen a mass divergence of who's taking on what roles in this particular moment. And that kind of makes sense, given the expanding needs everywhere that we see. But we should also be real, it is not well orchestrated. It is not well coordinated. I wish it was. I wish there was a clear division of labor that would say, hey, this group take over this threat, this crew take over that community need, this foundation tackles this particular issue, and through this coordination, we could maybe, hopefully collectively, hold up the sky long enough for the hardest-hit communities to weather the storm. I really do wish it was that coordinated, but the reality is that we're all just scrambling to do all we can with all we got, and there is not that level of coordination in a place like Los Angeles. The best shot we have to get things somewhat right, to be somewhat coordinated and effective with our limited resources, is to do the most fundamental thing, which is to show up and prioritize the right communities. Not only are we talking about the communities that hardly feel the impacts, not even are we talking about the communities that feel some of the impacts. We've got to talk about the communities that feel all of the impacts in the hardest, hardest way. Because regardless of our tactical approach or how we show up, it is critical that we show up in the right communities and that we show up with everything that we got. This is why your work around the Equity Index is absolutely critical in this particular moment and for years to come. You all are providing a level of leadership, hopefully by working alongside other entities that are taking similar equity-driven approaches, and with the formidable community infrastructure you will find in many of these communities, maybe not all, but in many of these communities, and that is our best shot. We won't be able to get that fully coordinated, fully well orchestrated-- We won't be able to get that fully coordinated, fully well-orchestrated effort, but this is our best shot at really alleviating the impacts of the most brutal regime and brutal time we've seen in generations. The last point I want to make is that in a moment like this, it is sort of essential for us to boil down the fight in its most elemental form. I do not believe this is just a fight about Democrats or Republicans. I do not believe this is just a fight about even the left or the right. I believe this is a fight about one that we're going to have a liberal or illiberal America in the future, and it is a fight over hearts and minds, and it is critical to show up in that kind of fight with real supports that address real needs and in real time. We need to show that local government and networks of support can indeed help people feel seen and supported, many of those who feel left behind, many who have felt abandoned and they've shifted towards snake oil salesmen and carnival bakers, and we need to show that there's a true alternative to the chaotic kleptocracy that we see right now. And so with all of that, you know, I think there is hardly a better way to change a person or family's point of view about whether they belong, their connection to community than how you treat their kids. I know for myself, as a parent, the way somebody treated my kids made all the difference in the world for me. And so the leadership positioning for First 5 LA at a moment like this is absolutely critical. I say, go full steam ahead. The only recommendation, the only caution that I have for the commission is to go faster. The compounding needs will only compound more. This new budget that was implicated in HR1 took effect eight, nine days ago, and so what we're seeing today will get worse tomorrow, next month, and the next year. So thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thanks, John. And I'll do my best to follow John once again. I talked about the Equity Index version 1.0 last time. This time, I'm going to speak a little bit about, sorry, and how the index related to indicators in the strategic plan. Since then, we've endeavored to land on an approach to choose high-need areas based on the Equity Index and other factors, so I'm going to talk a little bit about that today. So first, I'll say we engaged staff from across First 5 LA to understand what went well in the Best Start Geography selection process around 2010-ish, now with the benefit of hindsight. So a few of those folks are in the room, so I'm hoping to ask them to stand and be acknowledged, or at least wave. Amato's waving. Kim is up here. I'll keep him exactly there. Looks like John's back there. So thanks to them, you know, incredible leaders that First 5 LA has and has had for a long time. I've learned a ton from them over the years. Just, yeah, really appreciate their input in all this. And also, if I'm honest, First 5 LA has evolved as an organization since 2010-ish, so also hearing from them how First 5 LA has evolved and how First 5 LA might do things differently was very helpful as well. How's that going? Okay, cool. So through this engagement, they identified guiding factors for selecting high-need areas. So population is one of them. You know, first and foremost, they said that there frankly need to be enough children under five to ensure that supports will reach a lot of children, that enough families will be able to come to the table as advocates, and that there are enough resources to band together to form networks or other forms of support. Folks recommended looking at demographics, including leaning into First 5 LA's equity definition. So those include race, income, and geographic need, you know, much of which Equity Index version 1.0 gets at, but we would get at it more deeply. And then finally, one thing that people really liked about the Best Start process that other similar processes don't necessarily have or have had the benefit of is really looking at community assets and positives about communities and fits that First 5 LA would have with communities, particular to its mission, vision, and strategic plan. So those might include things like resources, services, and relationships. So, you know, types of resources, say, community-based organizations working for children and families. Types of services, other county agencies or other groups have service areas, so be incognizant of what those service areas are and matching up with them. And finally, relationships, including political jurisdictions and those types of advocacy relationships, to take advantage as best as possible of the advocacy skills and work that First 5 LA does. So I'll share just two examples of kind of digging into the demographics a little bit more deeply. So in Equity Index version 1.0, we looked at indicators like this one, but we're starting to do a little more of that, I'll talk about in a moment. So what you're seeing is a bar chart of the percentage of Los Angeles County households with children zero to five earning 138% of the federal poverty level, or, you know, by race ethnicity or low income for this, you know, for, to be shorter. You're also seeing, so if you're seeing, you know, black and Latinx bars being the highest in this case, having the highest poverty rates, you're seeing a red bar also showing, you know, really the depth of the difference between bars. And so that is a visual, but we're calculating indices of disparity for all these indicators so that basically quantify the angle of that bar, if you will, or how different groups are. So we didn't want to just stop at some bars are longer than others. We wanted to say, you know, be able to say quantitatively, there are groups that are having different outcomes than other groups. You know, there's no statistical instability, there's no argument about it. The USC Equity Research Institute uses this metric. We also identified in this chart that the black and Latinx poverty rates are above a standard deviation beyond all other poverty rates. Other groups, you know, have also established that these disparities exist between racial groups. I think the Othering and Belonging Institute, I think last time we talked about work the Children's Data Network does, others have really talked about, you know, the equity differences and equity needs of different families in the county. As a somewhat of a contrast, you're seeing, in this case, a chart of households by the percentage, excuse me, the percentage of LA County households with children zero to five that are rent burdened or paying 30% or more of their incomes on rents. And so you're seeing the steepness of that red bar has kind of changed. The bars are a little closer together. Still, in this case, black households are above a standard deviation beyond all other rates, so we can see differences in racial groups, but we can quantify that. On the other hand, you can also see that nearly six in 10 households with children zero to five are rent burdened, so that it really, the cost of housing really is a serious issue for all households with children zero to five. So we want to understand the disparities affecting our county's families with children, and then also understand the great needs, housing being one of them, for these families as well. So I will wrap up and say, through charts like these, when we apply them to neighborhoods, we see kind of, some neighborhoods kind of come up. So these are examples of high-need areas that kind of come up in these analyses. We have not, you know, run through all these factors, we've not applied all these factors yet, so I want to be clear that this is just an illustrative list of some of the high-need communities that come up. Some of these are in Best Start areas, as you're familiar, some of these are not, but just to give you an example, that we take these data, once we apply them to neighborhoods, we start to get high-need areas coming up that will eventually be selected. So I will stop there and say this ends the formal discussion, and I'll turn it back to, excuse me, the formal presentation, and I will turn it now to Aria for the discussion.
Thank you, Chris, John, and Kim. So with this, we want to turn to you, our board, and ask, what are critical conditions in our community engagement process that you would like to see to make sure that when applying the Equity Index, it ensures inclusive, responsive, and alignment to our strategic plan? We know that as our governance body, you have the charge of making the decisions once we bring recommendations to you and the design of the hubs network, the network of hubs model. And so, you know, we want to hear reflections from you on the presentation, but also in terms of what you need to see from us.
I was thrilled to see this. Thank you. It's a good thing you're back here, and thank you, John, for putting us in the urgency situation. When I first thought about redoing Best Start lines, I thought, oh, I hope Amato was part of it, because Amato was very instrumental the first time around, and I was so happy to see that footnote that's in. Amato as well as other people, because I remember the first time around trying to draw these lines, and it was strategic, but it was also awfully messy. And in the meantime, there've been a lot of people who have done work to, right. Just, I have one slight thing I noticed in one of the charts here, and then just sort of an overall thought. And the thing in the charts that I think would be really useful to include is number as well as percent, because there's such a difference when you talk about, you know, the denominator of different population groups, just for beginning, and they're also geographically dispersed in really different ways. So, I mean, we know our AIAN community isn't in any one place, et cetera. Just, I'm sure you're thinking about that, but it would help. And the hub model is really of great interest in so many places right now. So I'm working on the Families First Prevention Services Community Pathway at the state level and at the county level, right? And we have to do hubs. We have to make connections between resources that are currently available in different communities, because it's just so difficult to figure out how to find what you really need when you don't even know what to call what it is that you're looking to find. So I think the hub idea is really, really interesting, and I hope that we'll coordinate and align and work with other people who are also working on this hub idea, because we don't want five hubs in, you know, a particular geographic area, particularly areas that already are, you know, have a lot of resources that are heading in five different directions at once. So I love that idea, and I love where you're going, but those are just two things off the top of my head, and thank you for doing this work.
If five is too many, from your perspective, what would be an ideal number?
To me, an ideal number would be by a geographic catchment, one, where everybody can be part of that hub, that, you know, if a family says, and now I have, you know, whatever it is problem, that that hub has local partners, they know who to go to for that locally, they know who to go to for that, and they also know where the gaps in service are and what the capacity is, right? But then we have to go back to then, how many, and et cetera, et cetera, and it may not always work for different places, but we know it hasn't worked to have, you know, one navigator for early childhood education and a different navigator for home visiting and a different navigator for whatever else. So if we can say, know all those things families need, the infrastructure is pulling together those pieces.
Director Sagal.
Again, I've been very excited about the Equity Index. I'm proud to be a part of it. You all have great ideas. My, just kind of a piggyback on what Jack just said, Commissioner, I wonder how we're going to coordinate in terms of the indicators that already exist out there to begin to be more comprehensive, and again, to kind of, if we can't service it, where can we find the services that are available? Because this is such a priceless kind of a tool, I think that we need to take a look at as one of our objectives, the indicators for other places that are involved. But thank you again.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It was such a great presentation, especially building on the previous presentation that we had received. Just a quick thought kind of came into my mind as Dr. McCressy was speaking about, you know, not one navigator for each item. We recently finished a contract with DCFS, providing childcare or connecting families to childcare who needed it, and one of the challenges that we found through that process is that childcare was a separate branch than early learning, which is separate than the BRIDGE program, right? And so I think really also being willing to like look at our partner agencies and provide some guidance from those of us who can say, we can streamline here as we're also trying to streamline across the communities.
I'm sort of echoing what both of you had said. In listening to your assessment, I was thinking, okay, if the location or concentration of children is shifting, how are the provision of services in the new areas and across all the different agencies, you know, how can we communicate that? You know, what we've learned, this is where the need is, these are the services available where the need is, and I don't know if it's too complex or if this is even part of what you're envisioning, but this is where the services are today, and this is how we would recommend migrating them or augmenting them in order to address the current concentration of children and families.
Yeah, thanks so much. And I too, I so appreciated all the work in this and love the focus on trying to make it more real what the equity divide really looks like. I do have a bit of a disconnect, though, with the first slide that you led off with, which is about why this moment matters and sort of what's the new assignment, because I see the new assignment as something different. And I'm just, I'm curious whether this board has an opportunity to sort of look at this more broadly based on, you know, sort of the framework you laid, which is that we need, we need to have a vision of how to deal with millions and millions of dollars in reductions and funding for the various services that we need. So we can have great equity tools, and we can create powerful hubs, and we can do a much better job on not duplicating, but we don't have enough services. And I, you know, I've been thinking about this a lot over the last few days, and, you know, I was going to go back a little bit, but one thing is that I think there is a step up in this time. I'm going to call it sort of the mobilizing, organizing aspect of the work, not something historically we fund, but this moment seems to call for it. I've looked around and, you know, I've seen other organizations that have some kind of philanthropic arm, or are organizations that are contracting out for services for families with children and have an equity agenda, and many of them are creating emergency funds. The boards are actually authorizing the executive directors to move more quickly in a new model of giving that actually allows for some flexibility on the mobilizing and organizing side. Because I'm really worried, like, we're going to, we're creating tools that are useful when there are services, but we're having an erosion, like a massive erosion of the services. And, you know, an organizing mobilizing strategy seems the only opportunity that we have to sort of back up a little bit and deal with sort of some of the root cause issues again. You know, some of that involves different partners, but one thing I do know is it means organizations have to have more flexible dollars. So I appreciated hearing, you know, at the beginning, you said something, you had a little bit of money, we could go move to areas where ICE was really, you know, being forceful in their illegal raids and their kidnapping and be responsive to the needs in those communities. But there are organizations at this point that have come together and created strategies for mobilizing in those communities, and there's got to be a way to support those organizations, because we don't have enough money, like you noted, to sort of fill in the gaps, but maybe we could think as a board, is this the opportunity to go back? I know the budget is tight. I know people are worried about the perpetuity and, you know, what happens in the future, but we do have a moment where other organizations are seeking to set up more flexible funding that could be used for a different set of activities that gets, that addresses some of the real concerns of this time. I don't know. I'm sidetracking us a little, but I'm starting with this first slide that I think calls for a different moment.
And I guess my thought also is, as I listen to you, we did that during COVID, where we got real flexible and real creative, the collective we, in terms of pushing money out quickly, sometimes to unusual suspects, because they were Because they were close to communities in need the most. Carla, and then if, if other people want to comment on that, and then I'll come back. Dr. Ferrer, is that your only comment?
That is my only comment.
Okay, all right. So, if people want to comment on the comment, I'll go to you first and then, so Carla?
Yes, Commissioner Fetter, we're 100% aligned. So, the board was really thoughtful in giving us flexible funding that we'll share more of an update during the strategic plan. And it is the absolute right thing to do during this time. And we stayed within the guardrails of basic need. So, offering both, we, I, I think to John Kim's point, we have to try several strategies at this time because when we come back, it changes on us. So, flexible funding, we'll ask the board for a motion afterwards, this equity tool, and looking at rebuilding in the future. What is it that we are seeing, documenting that so that we offer something else? But we are in complete alignment that first five LA is exploring several strategies, given the times that we're in.
Can, can I add on this last part in terms of just?
Oh, yes.
I, I do want to say that during the wildfires, that was an example of where we were able to get resources. And then again, during the ICE raids, we were able to work with grantees and get funding out to support families with direct aid. And I think what you're speaking to is going a little bit further beyond the group's offering basic need. But I, I know that we'll present on it in more detail. But I wanted to say that there have been two recent examples where we have activated and supported our grantees based on what they said they needed.
Let me go to Director Burr. Are you following up on Dr. Ferrer? Okay.
Just coming from the role that I have in my work, I would say that what I've learned from COVID wildfires, ICE raids, is that we need a permanent.
Yes.
Financial fund. Because emergencies happen all of the time. And I think that that's what we've learned, is that we're not responding to the moment. We already are anticipating that we will have another emergency. And the flexibility of these dollars for the service providers who are directly serving those impacted is, is so critical. And it gives us the ability to act quickly and respond in a way that's really efficient. So, that's what I have learned over the years.
Okay, clarifying question there, I'm going to Director Burr.
Because I was thinking about before Carla mentioned that you're referring to the Strategic Initiatives Fund. That was increased from 150,000 to 4.7.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, that's a, thank you for that clarification.
Not a memory. I had to Google the, I, I looked up the LTF because I knew it was in there, so.
Significant. Director Burr?
So, I really appreciate this presentation. And our department's actually working on building out equity tools as well. So, this resonates really strongly with me. I guess I have a few questions. So, one is in response to the question you posed, or a comment. In terms of critical conditions for community engagement processes, I think one of the things I would highlight or recommend would be leveraging resources that are already established. So, the Department of Mental Health is standing up five community family resource centers that will be bringing in outside providers to deliver a range of services, providing mental health services, access linkage. There's going to be one of those in each supervisory district. I think this would be a great opportunity to leverage some of those resources within an established place. Looking at other established community resources that may be available to partner with, especially if we're looking at money to sustain families in immediate need. You know, where are those venues? Where are those spaces that people are going to right now who are in desperate need? So, I think that looking at those opportunities for where there's an established place, agency, resource, and families are already going. I think that the creativity around how we're, how we're dispersing those funds, those resources, food, whatever it is, because people are afraid. Going back to your example of an eight-year-old carrying pizzas. Like, we have cancellations to our services. We have clinics that have not seen a new intake in three months. Because people are afraid to show up. So, how do we use navigators that may already be established in some of the county's departments to do some of that work? How do we use promotories that DHS, DPH, DMH have to go out and provide some of that linkage or some of those resources? So, I think it's, to respond here, it's like, how do we look at what's already established within our system to help support those families who are afraid, who are scared?
Yes, and to keep updating the trainings, right? On what services they are eligible for, that they should be accessing. Because they're still able to access, so.
Right, and maybe even working with established places to bring those trainings in. So, if people are brave enough to go, because it's not a governmental agency.
That's right.
Right, it's a community-run organization. Having those resources there, having WIC there, right? Having CalWorks there, having those established places available. Even if it's once a week and we get that schedule out there, people showing up can fill out their forms. They can get support with that process.
I was just going to add that I agree, just don't want to echo what everyone, or I would echo what everyone is saying. But I would love for there to be an opportunity for this process to help inform other policy conversations. So, for example, I think that, and I'm not just saying this, Madam Chair, but I think we have an incredibly progressive county board supervisors. And there's so much reform that is happening around CalFresh and General Relief. But there's only so much value if you give someone access to a CalFresh voucher if they don't have access to healthy markets in their neighborhoods. Right, if you're giving people a, a cash rebate of any kind, but they don't have a bank in their district, right? So, how do we use the information that we're gathering from this process to share with other county departments, with other state agencies? And maybe it doesn't go anywhere, but I know I would be interested in, you know, I, I think it would, right? You would, you would want that information. So, and, and John, you've been such an incredible partner and you have been lifting up these inequities. And you have data that points to where we have banking deserts and food deserts and where people are doubled up and their challenge with food insecurity. We can connect a person to employment, but if they don't have childcare and we don't have 24-hour or childcare that is more flexible and conducive for a working parent, then we're limiting the ability of that person or that family to thrive and the community as a whole to thrive. So, that's why I would love to be able to take this data is to help see what other policy areas could be influenced potentially.
Actually, Commissioner Marquez teed it up perfectly for me because my, I'm going to piggyback on that. But first with a question under the guiding factors for selecting high-need areas for demographics. Within geographic need, does that include things like environmental factors? As families are moving farther away, maybe the affordable housing is closer to industrial areas, freeways, high-traffic areas where a lot of our Black and Brown children especially start to experience asthma and other health conditions. So, I would consider including that if it's not already there. And also, transportation. Families are moving to Antelope Valley, but the jobs are still here, so the commute is longer. Little ones have to be left home along, longer if they don't have affordable childcare. So, just tracking what the transportation looks like as families are dispersed to different areas, that are food deserts and healthcare deserts and transportation deserts. I also am curious as to how the data is going to be shared across other departments. Because just looking at the demographics for Black families in particular, this country has a long history of not only penalizing but criminalizing neglect or what they consider to be neglect. So, a family that's not able to provide hot meals or children are showing up to school chronically absent because of transportation issues, it becomes more punitive in response versus how can we help you? And I know DCFS has done a lot of work to change that. But we're still operating in a larger system that dictates how those families are responded to with harsher penalties versus more support. And so, I do see the Equity Index as a way to be more proactive. As we see shifts in the numbers, reaching out to DCFS saying, this is what we're seeing. These are the areas where we're seeing an uptick in families who are food insecure. Maybe you can jump on that before those families are flagged by their school districts or by their healthcare provider. So, I'm just curious about how the information is going to be shared to be more proactive as we work with other departments.
When you say transportation, do you mean access to transportation? Or commute time?
Both, a combination of both, yeah.
This presentation. And I, I may have spoken to this point last time, but I just want to continue to reiterate that when I looked at the, the word cloud of all the areas served, I, I kept thinking, if you want to make sure that people know that they're going to a safe space, you want to kind, to really sort of filter them to places of worship, right? Places where they do feel safe, where those are already existing. So, partnering up with those particular community places of worship, churches, temples, mosques that, that are going to be potentially safe havens are going to create a, a space where people can go. Of course, with willing and partners. There are, as mentioned, organizations that are already doing some of this work with face-based communities. So, I think that's a really important kind of space. And I'm, I'm going to always promote community colleges who are always looking at what are the disproportionate people that are not coming to school? And we have a huge problem, a demographic problem in some of our community colleges in our, in this, in the area. But our chancellor is a very willing participant in trying to partner with folks. So, I think that that's a space that, that might be looked at again. In addition, I know that there's a lot of conversations happening around housing in the community colleges. And so, that might be another place to kind of partner and, and have discussions around affordable housing that students can afford, but also that all of these families that can participate in. And we do have a lot of student parents. So, thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you for your presentation. And I just wanted to uplift how complex this work is. Because the, you know, the demographics are shifting on a daily basis, right? And so, like, the impact of the federal cuts, all of a sudden, we have families and children that are facing cuts that have never been in that situation before. So, I wanted to highlight how important information is and the dissemination of information for everyone. Because the, you know, if we looked at this map, you know, on a monthly basis, there could be changes to what we're seeing. And I also want to just, you know, everyone here is aware, but schools are a great place to provide information. You know, community schools and beyond. So, just very complex, but very appreciative of the lens that we are taking on.
Winnie? Just to follow up on that, because sitting here, I was thinking about the schools and about the fact that both, on the positive side, there are so many, it seems to me, I could be wrong, you're the expert. But it seems to me that so many schools are expanding their capacity for TK and even pre-TK. So, new service, new services available in, in certain communities. Plus, because of the financing mechanism in schools where population or attendance drives how much money those schools have and the obvious conflicts that many families have in sending their kids to schools, to what extent we can acknowledge this is potentially a new resource that's available for TK or pre-TK. Plus, by encouraging children to go to school, those schools will have increased funds from the state. So, there's just a whole cultural question that I don't know if this Equity Index can help bring to the top of people's minds about the value of attending school, both in terms of accessing childcare, food, you know, education, and also helping to finance our schools and keeping schools open. So, just had been thinking about that. I, I hope my, my understanding is accurate. Yes.
So, just to dovetail on the conversations around school from Commissioner Ramirez and Wexler, I think that we also have an opportunity for after-school programs. Expanded LA partners with all kinds of organizations to provide services to children and youth when school's not in session. So, before-school, after-school programming, holidays, breaks. So, Expanded LA is another opportunity where you have parents engaging in a non-governmental institution where we could have resources available. And there's just a tremendous need. I was on a call with them earlier this week and they are desperate for connectivity to organizations.
So, when I, yes, Mr. Kim?
Can I share a little bit, and then I'll turn it over to you, John? So, I do want to say that in the work that we are supporting this year with our regional network grantees and the 14 best-star communities, the priority work that they are looking at for a hubs learning, you know, period, is housing culturally, early care, culturally-affirming early care education services, right? And all of the safety net programs include increasing access to safety net programs. And I, we were supposed to have our strategic plan goals and objectives listed up here. We have a beautiful display, but we can't track it down, so our apologies. But I, I wanted to, you know, point to it because at our last PPC meeting, we presented on the Vibrant Environment Initiative and talked about, you know, the important work that is happening on joint use between the LAUSD and the city and how they are looking at access to green and open space and have opened the number of campuses, they've piloted the work, to make it available to families and communities. And so, we are absolutely like, looking at not just access to green space, but the environmental issues, right? That come up with having safe access to, you know, open spaces and parks. And in terms of leveraging relationships, I do think the connection and the leveraging of investments that are happening from public systems and from our philanthropic partners. So, we are going to do a presentation a little bit around multilingual learners and the whole Child Bright Futures Initiative and the early work that we're doing. But for us, that work is not about making large investments, but about really building and leveraging on the changing landscape and the fact that there, there is a new grade for four-year-olds with transitional kinder that is funded by the state and with investments in multilingual learning programs. And what does that mean for our work and how we support partners? And so, where I think that on the Equity Index, you know, we want to prepare together with all of you is that to have a presence in areas that don't currently have first-five investments around, you know, to support families with high needs, it will require shifting and transitioning of resources. And we will have to do that work together with your guidance. Because it is during the context that you all have shared. You know, it, it will be, there will be some decisions that you have to make for us to be able to move and evolve the community's model.
John?
I just, I, I wanted to bring it back real quick to Dr. Ferrer's point.
I just, I wanted to bring it back real quick to Dr. Ferrer's point, not just because I'm a big fan, but because, you know, I joined the California Wellness Foundation Board last year. I thought my job is going to be pretty straightforward, like show up and say, put all the money out immediately. Obviously, there are fiduciary responsibilities, looking at the endowment, what, how much can the market bear. But a lot of philanthropy has decided in this particular moment to not only understand the need to be bold right now, but also what good is a very large endowment when everything is kind of going by the wayside, you know? And so, so a lot of groups, they're finding the right moderated point, right? Going from 5% to 8%, or the endowment, which is the largest endowment, is up to 10%, right? And so there is something there in terms of understanding the moment and what it means in terms of payout. I also wanted to reflect on her point around looking at other strategies and understanding the assignment does mean that we may need a stretch in terms of the strategies. Just to tell a quick story, Mariachi Plaza was one of those communities that was hit intensely hard in the first few weeks of the ICE invasion. And it was a ghost town. It was a ghost town. And that's crazy if we know Mariachi Plaza. And a lot of our partners, in coordination with a coalition that we work with, were trying to throw in mutual aid as far and wide as they could. They are not built for mutual aid. The scale of the need against what they could do was very tough. And people were like not even opening their doors
Right.
in many ways, right? And so we shifted strategies and we turned to the organizers. And the organizers actually mobilized what we called reclaim our streets events, where we brought artists, bands, musicians, hundreds of people would show up to sort of reclaim Mariachi Plaza. And what we saw days and weeks after that is the economic opportunity kind of came back a little bit because we reclaimed it. And it's partially important for us to understand in this new assignment that, yes, they want numbers. They want numbers to feed their base in terms of how many people are being, you know, detained and deported and what have you. But also fear is the point. And we have to understand that there are things, other strategies that we have to play through. We're mobilizing, organizing, these are other strategies and tools that we may need to put into the toolkit.
Thank you very much for that example. That was really helpful. I'm looking at the question you posed to us. I pulled out the slide you gave us that, that were the guiding factors for selecting high-need areas. I'm wondering if you got what you needed from this robust discussion. I picked up transportation access and miles traveled. I picked up childcare access. What else will you, based on what you heard today, add to these bullets to answer the question you posed to us? Yes?
I didn't see any reference to the homeless population. How is that figure into the inequity, the gross inequities that this population and families are experiencing?
So in our strategic plan, our goal around housing is affordable housing, right, for families with young children, increasing access. During the vibrant environments presentation, we did, we did talk about the work that is happening with public housing around green space and vibrant environments. And I think that some of the conversations that we have talked about here, also at the Board of Commissioners, is about how do we prioritize, right, families that are experiencing not just housing insecurity, but house homelessness and being unhoused, and make sure that when we're looking at the equity index, that we are making sure that they are, you know, receiving support. And so absolutely, like we have to do that. And it will be under our housing work.
And I just want to support what Dr. Farrar was saying about the mobilization. I think anytime, I'm into communication and assuring that there's a knowledgeable population out there. And that seems, I think, to be the biggest frustration for so many of us, that how could there be so many people supporting what is happening? It is, it is baffling. So in terms of mobilization and organization, I see this communication, this is what it's doing. Yesterday, in our operations meeting, our medical, MT Medical Director specifically itemized the risk and danger to children in our community as a result of the Health and Human Service Secretary's messages about medication and vaccinations and so many confusing messages out there for children and families. So to the extent that we can do this kind of collective work, I think it can make a huge difference. And of course, what I see is the ultimate failure to families and the tragedies that can occur when someone's afraid to go to their door and accept help, or afraid to ask for it. I'm so sad for that little eight-year-old thinking of her being responsible for feeding her family because they're terrified and fearful. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, did I answer your question? We will look at all of the information that was brought up, not just around transportation and commute and access distance and environmental, but also all of the relationships between the issues, the, where the services are, where the education, the information is happening, where there's capacity around navigators and community health workers and other trusted entities or roles that are, can help to make the connection. And where are areas where because of where high need is now, services are not in the right place, right, or easily accessible? What does that mean in terms of not just accessibility with eligibility, but getting the services to people or getting people to the services? So those are some of the notes, but we took a lot of notes. Anything that you want to add, Kim?
I think, I, this could be the wrong thing to say, but I'm saying anyway. Given the Mariachi Plaza example, do we want to put legal status on the list?
Immigration? Yes.
As demographic, I mean, on your, on this list?
Yes.
Well, that's why I was like, uh.
Can I also offer, I, so part of this will have the nine objectives that we've discussed. And I do want to be careful that we think about putting everything into the equity index, because then all of a sudden, it will make it
Water down.
Yes, yes, yes. So we will start with the nine objectives from the strategic plan. And then I do think we have to look at the communities that, and there will be distinction in communities where we see there is a really high need for housing, we will have to look at rent burden, we will have to look at homelessness. So give us some time to go back and look at what is possible. And we'll come back as we think about future investments, about different communities and the needs that might exist.
Let me go to Dr. Ferrer, Sagala, and then Bird.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing that I worry about is there's, there's not really a good measure around work. And, you know, I know we struggle, like unemployment's not the right measure. But, but work, work is like a super, is super highly correlated with so many other issues here. And type of work is equally important. And so I don't know, you know, if there's a way to identify one or two indicators that capture more of that. I mean, it's associated with risk, risk for the individual, risk for the family. And also, you know, I think ends up being a marker for issues related to immigration status, mobility, capacity. I don't know. I don't know if there's some, I mean, we really don't have anything in there. I don't think income inequality actually captures work experience, so. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, just work is more than just the money. I mean, there's a whole bunch of other things tied to work.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Right, benefits.
So, so I don't, I don't know. But on a direct answer, is there some indicator there that you might want to, you might want to try to think about?
Mr. Sagala?
Dissemination, I think, is going to be key to this. And I'm really excited to see the various levels of information that we can share in the community, and then also to look at multivariate ways of disseminating as well, because I think we are providing a good model in terms of the county, and again, of the hubs we hope to develop or that are already developed and that we can utilize. So I think that dissemination is very interesting. Thank you.
So the only thing I would offer, and just to tie it back into the housing comment you made, is that the managed care plans have this new responsibility for housing supportive services. So I do think to the extent there could be engagement with, coordination with the managed care plan so that
Bless you.
individuals who have one of those plans have access to those resources.
Thank you. We'll look into it, for sure.
Is that it?
Yes.
Well, that was a hearty conversation. Thank you very much. Great presentation. We are, look at us right on time. Go ahead. We're even ahead of time a little bit. Our next item is to take a break. So since it's 3:15, why don't we come back at 3:30?
And, and Madam Chair, before we break, if I may offer, we do not have public comments for this current item.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. I was going to say I knew that, but I cannot tell a lie. No, no public comment on this item. Thank you. That's why she's there to keep me on track. All right, let's start 3:30 on the dot. Fair enough? She does. She does. Doesn't say, Madam Chair, how many? Say, Madam Chair, how many?
We're going to hear from our Vice President of Operations and Sustainability. Thank you, JR.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is an annual review of our strategic plan. And just to bit preface this, this is a bit of an administrative item. So I'll talk a little bit about the context behind it, and a recap of our strategic plan, and how it evolved over time. To provide some context, when the voters passed Prop 10 back in 1998, it established requirements that, at local commissions, they would bring back their strategic plans to the Board on an annual basis, so that there will be an opportunity to review those plans. Now, if a commission decides to change their strategic plan, they have the right to do so, but do so through a separate public hearing. We are not proposing or making any changes to our strategic plan, so this is not being conducted as a separate public hearing. But it will fulfill our requirement administratively to have an annual review of our strategic plan. For a recap, the Board approved our strategic plan in November 2023. It was built upon the GOS framework of goals, objectives, and strategies, and at the time, began development of tactics. This presentation of the strategic plan, as you can see on this slide, has evolved into what you see today. And if you recall, input was played, community input played a critical role in moving this forward, as well as board interviews, which were also used in its development. Please note that on November 2024, we introduced the four initiatives. They're on the bottom right, where you will, which served as a roadmap for translating this strategic plan into action, while uplifting well-being of children age five and younger across LA County. Planning and implementation were essential in moving these initiatives forward. Over the course of this year to present, staff has been working diligently in moving these initiatives forward through an implementation planning process, as well as an implementation process. During the implementation planning process, this led to identifying top priorities that, as you can see, has broken down the initiatives into more detailed, actionable, focused priorities for these. Furthermore, this effort, when we moved toward implementation, this effort led to where we are today, where these top priorities each were broken down into a small portfolio of projects, which we're calling priority areas, where there's primary leads assigned to each of them. So as an example, prevention has probably up to three project areas, which we're calling priority areas, and each of the priority areas, excuse me, priorities in the middle each have their own specific priority areas. So the chart would be much larger for this if we actually laid out all the priority areas for those. But just know, each of them have their own projects. So with that, thank you, Board, for hearing this update. And in as far as the next steps, we are completing our annual Prop 10 strategic plan review today, and you will hear more about our strategic plan update for the next agenda item.
Any questions or comments from Commissioners? Any public comments on this item as well?
Confirming there are no public comments on this item.
Thank you. Let's move on to, I will continue again with informational comments, the strategic plan implementation update. Carla, please.
I will get us started as we get Nancy on cue. So folks, we had shared that we would provide an update on interviews in June, and we had to have an emergency meeting in June, given what was happening in Los Angeles. So this worked out nicely, because you get more of an update, not only on the interviews, but what we have been doing on the strategic plan as well. So Nancy will kick it off to share a summary of the interviews. I do want to share, Nancy drafted up a report for my review. I've shared that with First Five L.A. team members, and today you'll hear a summary of some of the high-level points that many of you shared with her. So Nancy, are you pulling up Nancy Amato? Oh, hi, Nancy. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you too. Hello, everyone.
Hey, Nancy.
All right, Nancy, if you want to kick it off for us?
Okay, why don't we move ahead one slide? So Carla just said, earlier, I was able to talk to 12 members of the Board, and presented Carla with a over 40-page report that she shared with staff. So there's so many insights and observations that were critically important that will be reviewed. This high level doesn't at all do justice to what people said. So I want to thank all of the Board members for their insight, but most of all, for their really thoughtful commitment to the mission and objectives of L.A. First Five and the Children of Los Angeles. So I think, as we've seen today in practice at this Board meeting, the strategic plan is a living plan, and we're always having to balance being responsive, shaping the future, continuity, and partnership, which is very complex. But I think that the staff has done an incredible job of implementing the vision that the Board approved. So I'm going to start, next slide, with what, not surprisingly, was our very first question and discussion in each of the Board interviews, which was really looking at what is the response to the current administration and the real unprecedented threats to Los Angeles children and families and programs. And as you'll notice in the first sentence, one of the things that the Board all talked about was monitoring, but also advocating at the federal level, and really increasing staff capacity and empowering the staff to do that. And I think that's very in line with some of the things that have been talked about so far. And this work crosses all the initiatives of the strategic plan, and utilizes numerous tactics. But when we talked about the federal response, as has been clear today, one of the first things that was raised was the threat to immigrant families, which I'll talk about next. The next thing was how high a priority it is to work with the L.A. County Board of Supervisors and L.A. City and other partners to really have a unified voice. And people mentioned the First Fives, as well as all of the community-based partners that you work with. As well as, and I thought this was a very interesting insight, that the Board itself is a coalition, and that the members represent large, powerful organizations, and the leadership that L.A. First Five can really provide on how the federal impacts on children, are impacting children, birth to five, and their families, really spreads out throughout all of the organizations. Next slide. As I said, I'm going so fast, I'm not doing justice to all the incredible insights you had. But the next thing we talked about quite specifically was threats to immigrant families and children, and this was really an example where, very immediately, even before these interviews, immediately when this happened, First Five was acting. And First Five L.A. is well-respected, and really is able to act on issues with resources, pull together partnerships, as well as really talk about the value immigrants add, as well as disseminating and communicating information to people about the services that they can have. And really, it's a big emphasis on immigrant families feeling safe and stable, and also on all of us having to really look at how services are provided, how communication is provided. And I think the Mariachi Plaza is a great example of that earlier. We also need to look at this in terms of the threats beyond the immigrant community, women's rights, Black families, the military occupations, and all of the other things that are happening because of the administration. Next slide, please. We then went on to talk about, we talked about two initiatives. First, the Prevention First Initiative, and this comes to really what Carla was talking about earlier, as our shaping the future part of what, what we're doing. And the Board really strongly supported the focus on root causes and prevention. Many talked about Carla's participation in the PPSGC, the Governing Committee, where she represents birth-to-five issues, as well as is the only non-county employee, so is really a community voice within that. Numerous Board members also talked about specific support for guaranteed basic income, and some of the presentations that had occurred, and the partnerships that were important, and then saw housing as a key issue, as has come up today, but needed more information on First Five L.A. potential roles, which some was presented at the last committee meetings, as well as will be discussed, discussed further. And I think that the hubs idea came up several times throughout the discussion of Prevention First, is how important that whole formulation and model is in terms of prevention. Next slide. Next slide. So then, we focused in terms of maternal and child well-being on the home visiting program. It is the largest programmatic investment of First Five L.A., as well as one that there's been a good deal of discussion about. So we wanted to have some more in-depth discussion. I think today, the equity index discussion was something that the Board, Board members really wanted, is to have the equity index, and to be able to look at this whole program in the context of equity, as well as where it's going overall in L.A., why the program... the context of equity, as well as where it's going overall in LA, why the program is not utilized by Black families at the same level as others, finding that out. And the several Board members talked about when times are tough, targeted models are better use of resources. And then, again, to go back to Dr. Ferrer, we also have the whole issue of access to services when there is such underfunding of services right now, that for home visiting to be successful, you have to have access to real services, and that is something that connects back to when we were talking about federal advocacy and state advocacy. Next slide, please. This is all in certainly the context of the long-term financial plan. And I think that all of the Board members supported the approach and parameters. People had different views of flexibilities that were needed, and I think that the need for emergency funding and how they have, how First Five has responded to that this year is important, and Carla will talk about that later. Members also talked about having more information at the programmatic level on how the LA First Five reductions are related to other reductions, and cross-walking in some kind of way budget and program reports. And I know next month, when you look at the very detailed financial reports that come every year, they will highlight where you could kind of link the programmatic aspects of that, and that's something that the staff will be working on. Next slide. And then the last thing we talked about was board engagement, and I think that all of the staff who are here should be very gratified at the number of extremely positive comments that were made about the board presentations and discussions, at the staff, as one person said, does a fantastic job at the board meetings and the presentations, and has really responded in terms of linking them to the strategic plan. I think that the specific ideas here, which were numerous, are something, as Carla said earlier, that the staff will be reviewing. Next slide. And after that very quick review of what were very substantial interviews, I want to then turn it over to Carla.
Nancy, thank you so much. That was a lot of conversations, summarized really, really succinctly, and will continue to engage in listening.
I was just saying, thank you for your patience with us, Nancy. I know, trying to get us scheduled, and then, I don't know if the other people rambled on like I did, then had to be brought back to the topic. So thank you for your patience with us, Nancy.
Well, I really didn't have to have patience. I think the ramblings were some of the most interesting parts of the interviews. So thank you.
I really also appreciate how Nancy's report really highlights the Board's commitment to our strategic plan. And as a quick update to the strategic plan, folks, we wanted to remind you, there's the three goals that you all structured the strategic plan around: basic needs, built environment, and attachment to families, and making sure that children thrive, that we don't just stop at basic needs, that our children deserve more. And part of what we've included, we've shared this before, there is a Manila folder that has an overview of why we invest in the early years, why California passed Proposition 10, and so much is happening in the early years. And the graph in front of you is really demonstrating the brain plasticity and how much learning is happening before the age of five. It doesn't mean this is where it stops. It doesn't mean that we're done, we're fully baked, but it is where interventions are most helpful, when we think about the early years. Later, today, you'll hear from presenters on language. If you look at that yellow line, we have the strongest capacity to learn more languages in the early years, yet our investment is often in the later years. So often, we turn to this graph on early brain development, on why we do some of the work that you're going to hear about today, and why these years really, really matter for young children. So with our strategic plan, and what Nancy shared with you all, what we will do is give you a looking back 2025 and how we responded to some of the issues you lifted up, and we didn't respond to all of them. We have to be really, really honest with ourselves that there's so much more we could be doing as First Five LA in partnership with the Board, in partnership with others in the county. So for the federal response, the Board was really clear that you all wanted updates on a monthly basis about what was happening. So what we proactively did was make sure that we brought in the California Budget. They changed their name many years ago, but I continue to call them the California Budget Project.
That's who they are.
California Budget and Policy Center.
Right.
And the reason we thought it was important for the Board to hear directly from them, they were getting real-time information, and we were getting that information out to our grantees. So that was the federal response. And at the same time, I really, you all heard from Hadi and Kim earlier today, we were able to serve 130,000-plus families while we were looking at these families, caregivers, providers, while we were dealing with this emergency situation, because we knew we needed to be out in community while our families were really struggling. So that's looking at 2025 with the federal responses. Looking ahead, I do want to share with you all, we think we've got to build a strategic federal policy agenda. We have to be ready to respond after all that we see is happening right now. So next month, we have invited Kim Johnson, the Secretary of the California Health and Human Services, yes, we're very excited, to join us at the meeting to give us both, what are the impacts of what's happening at the federal level, what are the impacts on California, and what are opportunities? They really have potential opportunities during this time. How do we better use technology during these times? So with federal response, we have to continue to shape and will continue to shape, and the upcoming year, we will ask more about what's really important for you all to see. The second issue that Nancy brought up is immigrant families and children. We've heard everything that's happening right now with immigrant communities, and in looking back in 2025, you all gave us the flexibility with the 4.7, remarkable memory, 4.7 million strategic initiatives, to be more flexible and to be innovative about opportunities that we need in regards to providing basic needs. So right now, we are looking at partnering with folks with the Angelino Card and its flexibility that you all provided in order for us to be responsive during these times. Looking ahead, as you all know, and as the Chair reminded us, HR 1 was signed into law in July. That law put in $170 billion for immigrant and border enforcement activities for the next four years. When the federal government is investing $170 billion in border control for the next couple of years, you know, that's half of what California invests in an annual basis. Where the federal government is investing $170 million, that will have dramatic impact on what our families are going to experience in Los Angeles. So what First Five LA has done, we've launched a rapid response team internally, because, as was mentioned earlier, these emergencies are hitting us over and over again, and we're getting smarter, all of us are getting smarter about how to come together quicker. And the rapid response team within First Five LA is looking to figure out how we're building out our internal infrastructure so that we could be more nimble as these issues come up. So we're hoping to work with you all on that. I'm going as fast as Nancy, because I want to give you really quick updates. With the prevention initiative, I'm going to leave it at what Nancy shared, and will just share with you all that that committee, the Prevention Committee, is really looking at coordination so that we more effectively use our dollars. We don't need new dollars. How do we work together and coordinate so that we're serving families how they need us to serve? So that's the hard work that committee is working on right now. We have a lot of updates on the maternal and child well-being, but I do see questions and inquisitive thoughts. If you all need me to pause? No, okay.
They're in deep thought.
The maternal and child well-being. So here, first, I want to be really, really clear. First Five Los Angeles is committed to the African-American Infant and Maternal Mortality Work, AIM work. We are committed, and we're looking to deepen that work, and also address issues around facing families, Native American families, and Pacific Islander families. So you will see more of that, and in November, you will hear policy work around that, so you'll hear a quick update. The second issue that Board members raised was the opportunity to work more closely with managed care plans. And I do want to highlight some of the really good work that First Five LA and team members, some of which are in the audience, are leading right now. So first, item seven today in our agenda gives you a summary of agreement that we're anticipating around $900,000 coming in from LA Healthcare, in addition for home visiting programs. And that's part of the work that we've been doing around managed care plans. In addition, we have partnered with Blue Shield of California, Promise Health Plan, to test value-based payment models to support expansion and sustainability of home visiting programs. And we continue to work with other First Fives in Southern California to negotiate MOUs and be on the same page in regards to what's being asked. One of the things that our team members have led our efforts about collecting data that's aligned to our objectives. And lastly, for home visiting, I do want to share with the Board, we have heard you really, really clearly. We have to think about this program and how it's going to evolve, given our fiscal reality. So looking ahead, we will be working with the Board really closely at Program and Planning Committee to look at an aligned home visiting vision, that's with Department of Public Health, with Department of DCFS as well. We will be reaching out, have already reached out to folks, DMH, and of course, DPSS, because we think this is a county-wide effort, and looking at it more holistically. And then lastly, folks, I'll give a quick update on the long-term financial plan. Board members, I cannot thank you enough for putting us in the position to be fiscally responsible and responsive. Our long-term financial plan, you all thought about strategic investments, because we knew this year was going to look different than other years. You all allowed for that flexibility, and it puts us in a position where we could think about long-term strategy and federal responses. So our fiscal reality will require us to continue to focus and stay focused on the trajectory you set us on. And I do want to be really, really clear that this also allows us to look at the equity index, to make sure that we have a tool and guiding principles internally that align our values and align the data of what we're seeing with where investments will go. So with that, we really want to hear from you. We're envisioning for First Five LA, I think we have to be innovative. If we do not innovate and do the same thing, we're going to see the same issues. And I think we have to keep things that we know are really working, and we have to evolve and innovate new work. Some Program and Planning Committee members heard about the green space work that will be coming up. Today, you will hear about multi-language, but I think that is our role and our contribution, and would love to hear what you see as really important components of what First Five LA needs to continue to do, and questions that you have. But we are thrilled that you have given us a framework that allows us to be both nimble and act with urgency and think about long-term. So with that, I will turn it to Nancy, who will set up some discussion questions.
Okay, next slide, please. So I think these questions are interrelated, and just as the questions in the interviews, it's really a jumping-off point, not that we, not specific answers. And so what Carla and I were thinking that we would like to understand better are, is do you really see that the current policy and organizational changes have been responsive to the Board, both Board meetings and the Board interviews in advancing the strategic plan? How can First Five be both responsive to the immediate needs of what is happening and the impacts of the draconian federal policies while also maintaining vision? And then, are there other points of agreement or points that Board members would like to add that they presented in the interviews or that they think are critical as we're looking forward at the strategic plan? So as I said, I think these are related, and I will turn it back to Carla, because I cannot see any of you in terms of discussion.
You know, let me start by saying, when I look at question number two, you know, strategic planning can be tricky. It can air in many ways, but one, or two ways of many, is it could be too prescriptive, that your hands are tied, and if the universe, you know, changes at all, we're out of alignment. Or it could be so vague, it's not measurable. And I think through our work and coming back at it and coming back at it, we struck a decent balance, where it has allowed, we did have the pot of money that allowed you to be flexible to respond to the changing environment. I think our previous conversation, Nancy, I don't know if you've been on the whole board meeting, but the whole conversation about the equity index and the conversation that ensued, that as a result of, is indicative of our ability and willingness to use our resources, to empower staff to respond, and recognizing our high-level kind of strategic thinking is on behalf of the families that are being directly impacted by some of these draconian federal policies right now. So for me, I feel that there's alignment. Commissioner Segala.
Just to go back to something we spoke of earlier, and Commissioner McCloskey talked about not just percentages, but numbers. I think I'd like to see some of that in the outcomes, because, I mean, our impact is greater when we're looking at the numbers than simply just a percentage. So I appreciate the percentages when we're looking at outcomes, but I think that the number of impact really, really changes our vision of what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I say the other hand? Yes, Commissioner, then we'll come here.
Thank you. Thank you. And I also will address question number two. I think in our earlier conversation, it was surfaced that we have to be really strategic about partnerships and who we're partnering with, because what used to work doesn't work anymore. And, you know, I think Dr. Byrd lifted up the promotoras that are in different organizations, and so I think that that's some of the work that we need to engage in, is really doing a little bit of a deeper dive into like, who has access to people who, right now, are no longer accessing services.
And just to add to your sentence, and to the kinds of staff or workers who can be on the ground with those families, who are trusted and who can be on the ground. And so I thought, your conversation about community health workers and promotoras, and it does get back to partnerships, strategic partnerships, but it's not just, you know, the partnership we're all moving forward. It is, and how do we engage the staff who are already in place so that they can meet multiple objectives, or so that they know who to connect with to meet multiple family objectives? I think that's important. But to the question number one, I just wanted to say, I think you've come up with a really good way of getting direct input from all the commissioners. I always liked the idea of Nancy helping in whatever way, but I think the individual interviews, which not only is, she knows, give us a chance to talk a lot, but then to put it together and to bring it back in this way, I think is just a wonderful, multi-part process. process that enables all of us to hear a little bit more about what each of us are thinking without individual presentations. I think that's great. But the major thing to me right now is the partnerships. We have a lot of partnerships, but we have, there's so many more that we could engage in, and I know we can't do them all, but let's think about which ones are key and why. And in particular, for the systems that are changing, like Medi-Cal, that is urgent.
Yes, it is.
That partnership is really urgent, and there are some others, too. Schools in general, it's, we've mentioned them, but how do we get urgent? One of my favorite quotes from, I think it was President Eisenhower about strategic plans, is, "It's not the plan, it's the planning."
Right.
And I feel like we're getting to a good balance.
Go here, then I'll come back around. Yes, Commissioner.
So I was just sharing with Commissioner Byrd that earlier this week, Zero to Three, I think, the national organization captured a quote that said something to the effect of, I think they were paraphrasing someone, of, "They're too young to remember us, but their nervous system will."
Say it one more time.
Sorry. "They're too young," right, as in young children, "are too young to remember us, but their nervous system will." And so I really thought about that with
The brains won't.
Yes, I know. It gave me chills, and it still does every time I look at it. And I really thought about that when I looked at this question about impacted by draconian federal policies while maintaining the vision of our strategic plan. And I'm just, I'm starting to feel this urgent need possibly of, I love all of the advertising that First Five does, I love the billboards and the, you know, all of the outreach, and I'm just wondering if it needs to be that step further of looking at kind of the trauma-responsive piece, of looking at, you know, are, here are some ways to talk to your children about X, Y, Z, or, I'm trying to think of some of the other things of, you know, managing, you know, tantrums, meltdowns, and much more
Fear.
Yeah, like, and the fear that sounds it, right? So we're kind of, I think we're all looking at it sometimes of like this very kind of upper level, and I think maybe we need to really start diving into the nitty-gritty of it to get to really trust, to get families to trust us, so that when they see, you know, that there's these hubs out there, they're like, oh, that's that organization that had that cool billboard that I saw one day when I was waiting at the bus and my kid was melting down, and I didn't know what to tell them about what happened to their family member that's missing. Or, I know I'm going into the weeds, but I really feel like if we want to really get to that question and to really address that, I think that we need to start kind of maybe going even deeper with the content that we're covering. Thank you.
I, thank you for elevating that. Nancy will remember, because I had that aha moment in the state legislature when we were doing cuts, and we were always told by the administration, well, maybe next year will be better, next year will be better, bring it back next year. And at one point, I said, you know, kids don't get do-overs. The kid who's a three-year-old today, who we don't have a childcare slot, they're not going to stay three until the grown-ups figure it out. And so you're so right. And so they may not remember, but they will be impacted by these cuts. And we have to be mindful of that and figure out how we build systems or alter our systems to acknowledge that reality.
So, what prompted that conversation is I was looking at this table. And I commented that the emotional control, the ritual ways of responding, the language, the peer social skills are all like zero to two or
Yep.
At their highest point. And what we saw during COVID, through that isolation that happened, growing up to be separate, you know, kept at home, worries me.
Yes.
Because people are afraid to leave their houses.
Yes.
And the more we isolate and the less input they have to their nervous systems, to their brain
From others, yes.
The delay that is happening is super concerning.
Yes.
And so I think as we're working with organizations and supporting these families, how do we do that in a more creative way, a more flexible way, a different way, a way that leverages the learning we have available from 2020 on
Right.
To really support these children and their brain development.
Can I have you?
So, first, I want to thank Nancy. I always enjoy our conversations. I really appreciate having a thought partner, and thank you for, Carla, for connecting us in that way. My first response is to what Commissioner Cortez just brought up, and I would even say that we could expand that marketing to the adults, because we're not, our children are not okay if we're not okay. And Carla and I were talking about in the break, how we quantify a lot of data, but what we're feeling, even in these meetings and when we're having these conversations, is wearing on us.
Yes.
And this administration is hurting our communities in more than just the physical ways with the resource depletion. And so I think the mental health aspect of it is huge in just caring for ourselves and reminding ourselves that as we're caring for others, we are starting to really pour from empty cups. And so that messaging would be really encouraging, and it could also be a mindset shift that people need to start to see the silver lining. And so that was actually going to be my comment to this, I guess for number three, is the fact that there are some silver linings following COVID and now following, you know, the federal policies and budget cuts, and the fact that some of these systems didn't work for families prior to COVID or prior to this administration. And a lot of those families were ignored when they were told we're suffering. These are our pain points. The system is not seeing us, the system is not working for us, if anything, it's working actively against us. And even with the data for children zero to five, we've seen that in schools, too, with the disproportionate expulsion or suspension rates for certain demographics of students, because they didn't have the emotional regulation, and instead of getting support, they were expelled or suspended. And so this is an opportunity to not just be responsive to the needs of the community, but to actually redesign and create systems that are more holistic, that actually see all people in all forms and be proactive in saying, if this system is being destroyed or taken down, let's build up something better. This is our opportunity to do that. And I also think that what we can't do is, sometimes throughout, if you've ever seen the documentary, Who We Are, Jeffrey Robinson talks about, again, I brought this up last time, I think, but that tipping point, where it goes up to a point where things could change, but then the ball rolls back down, just as we get to status quo. And so sometimes we talk about what's happening right now as if we want to get back to politics as usual or business as usual, because that was easier than where we are right now, to be honest. Like, most of us really don't love politics, but politics as usual was better than where we are right now. We have to avoid that comfort level of just getting back to politics as usual or the status quo, and continue to push ourselves to create new systems that won't be undone once there's a new, better administration in office or we get past this point. So, thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to elevate something that Commissioner Byrd, Commissioner Brad, that you touched upon, and that is that worry, anxiety, and
Isolation, create very risky situations for very young children. And that isolation really worries me. We don't know what's going on. And so I think how we look at mobilizing our outreach has to shift during this time. In addition, and what you talked about with the quinceañera, which of course I had heard about, but there are parents that are not coming to visitation anymore because they fear stepping out of their home. And so children are being isolated and the impact for them at three, when it plays out, when they've never possibly seen their parent again, and what that means. And so I think that there's just, that's really, that's a different area, but just in terms of, like I said, our outreach, our mobilization, our contact, our support has to really look different during this time.
I was going to say something different, but what you're saying to me is so important. I feel like both professionals, as well as families themselves, parents themselves or caregivers, you know, potentially lack the advice, you know, the five points, the 10 points, like what to do. We are in such a moment of, you know, so many things changing, you know, flooding the zone, all of that, but it just feels like there's so much expertise in this organization that's unique and that doesn't exist elsewhere, that could really be mobilized to provide advice both at the professional level to our partner organizations, I mean, getting the information from them, but then somehow summarizing it. I don't know if it's a public campaign, if it's, you know, something that's more focused on the, you know, trade itself, on professionals themselves, but what should people be doing now to help those in their care? And what can parents be doing for those in their care? I don't know that there isn't anything that exists that we can advise people to go to, go to this website, go to this place, and it just feels like potentially First Five could do that, to the extent that others agree that that is something that's missing. And along those lines, you know, when you were talking about immigration and adding that potentially to the index, like what would that be? Is it maybe just legal services? Access to legal services? That's a far more neutral way of really capturing, how can our communities respond to those who are dealing with those issues? So that sort of fits in there, too. And something else that came up in an earlier conversation along these lines was managed care's role, growing role, thanks to Cal-Aim and other policies, and how they don't have that expertise that clearly people are going to them for. And so I know that, my understanding is that First Five has already established those, but again, you know, we're here, we're like the knowledge base in Los Angeles for this population, and, I mean, there's such a need, and there's such an opportunity, and you have people who really want it. It's a matter of how do we organize that? And I think you certainly are the right person to do it.
Oh, I'll respond in summary.
Okay. Commissioner Sagala, did you have your hand? Okay. Anyone else on the side? Come back over here, yes.
I've lifted this up in previous meetings, but I'm very concerned that the federal cuts, you know, the state and the local government will not be in a position to absorb.
No, we cannot.
We're not, right?
We cannot.
So, at the federal level, the impacts are decimating, you know, families and low-income working families across the country and for us here locally. And so I do think that First Five can have an incredible presence in organizing and advocacy, in putting, you know, a family's first agenda of some sort, you know, front and center, and maybe, because, you know, what you said, Supervisor, you know, can't wait, children can't wait. And so, because what I always get frustrated by is that even at the local level, these are the programs that are first to get cut. And so how do we collectively rally around the significance and the impact of these programs, and how this is a moment where we have to step in even more
Yes.
And show up even greater for our families? Because the federal government is running away from, right, from their responsibility. And so that's what I am very interested in being a part of, and I do think that as a region, I mean, I think about like these, like collective impact or these pledges that we can make across the 88 cities, that we're going to come together and show up for our families when the federal government is not going to be in a position to do that. So I would love to work on that with you all, because I already seen it, you know, today I got, I have to reduce my budget by X million, and at the local level.
Yes.
Not to mention what I'm anticipating at the federal level. And so there's real implications to the work that we do.
I agree. I appreciate you talking about the lean-in, because we're looking at now, unfortunately, Medi-Cal recerts are low now.
Yep.
And, you know, we want people in the program as long as they can be and to hold them, but already our recertification numbers are low. People are afraid. And so having to lean in on the services that are available and demand, you know, people have access to them as long as we can, is important. I don't know how we get that message out, but it's an important one. Can I see anybody else's hand up? Yeah, I'm trying to go back and forth, left to right, because, there, y'all are topping the day.
Yes, yes, it's fantastic.
I love it, it's amazing.
I'll share a quick overview. So I appreciate this board partnership so, so much. The real clarity on children and families, the care, the depth and sort of alignment that we have. I did not hear, no, do not go down that direction. So some of the things that we mentioned, I'm hearing generally go down that direction with two things. One, you all really want us to focus on partnerships, completely agree. And there's the partnerships of folks that are doing some of the really good work. So I will highlight First Five California on the trauma-informed work, and a lot of the advertisements that you all see, it's actually not First Five LA dollars, it's First Five California, and we have to leverage those partnerships. And they are doing a lot of really good work on getting information out to parents about trauma-informed and adjustments that need to be made. So we will listen to you all in regards to making sure that we're partnering with folks that are doing that really good work and elevate that work. And we do have to partner better with those CBOs that are working directly with families. We will work on that for 2026. The second big aspect I'm hearing from you all is on innovation and making sure that we are building something better. We have the opportunity to innovate and the flexibility to do it with the partnership that you all give us as we think about our budget. So we will take that task and really look at what opportunities we have, including legal services. How do we support some of that? But we'll really hold innovation. I do want to end by thanking Nancy. I completely agree. She's such a humble human being, that she did not share all her fantastic background, but this has really helped us hear you all out and makes us better. And I want to end also by, for the First Five LA staff that's listening, the team is working incredibly hard on these innovation ideas. JR-led efforts, yes, yes, thank you, JR. JR-led internal implementation team efforts, and there's a group of about 40 folks that really did incredible work to elevate some of these ideas. We will highlight their work in the following year. But for implementation team leads that are listening, I hope you, all the things that you have shared, we're hearing here with the board, so I hope you feel validated in a lot of the really, really heavy lifting that you have done. We will come back and have more conversations on this. We do have one more agenda item, but I know Ms. Bo is going to ask something before we transition to the next agenda item.
I'm going to beat her to it, why? Ms. Bo, is there any public comment on this agenda item?
We've got 10. No, we have no public comments on this item.
That's what, you said none?
None, we have none.
Thank you very much. I believed her, too. I was like, woo! All right, colleagues, we're going to transition to our final agenda item, which is 14. It's an informational item, Whole Child Bright Futures Initiative. Thank you. Adia and Dua.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I realized, can we just get a time? Do we need to adjust our time?
Yeah, because we were wonderfully ahead of schedule, and now we're not. So it's 4:22. Adia, tell me, you were originally scheduled for 25 minutes for this agenda item. Tell me what you need.
12 minutes to present and then question and answer. Is that
Everybody comfortable with that?
No, you need 12 minutes, 15 minutes? 15 minutes, we'll get through it.
Beautiful, thank you.
So, good afternoon again. I am delighted to be joined by our guest presenter, Dua Thaw, Chief Impact Officer at Everyday Consulting. And, you know, we are honored to focus on that longer-term work where we're talking about children thriving, but also really bringing joy to the families that we work with. We are presenting under the Whole Child Bright Futures Initiative, and we will review Broad Strokes, the Whole Child Bright Futures Initiative. Dua will present on the multilingual learners priority area, and we will open it up for discussion. So in terms of, with the Whole Child Bright Futures Initiative, we are centering universal quality early care and education that meets every family's needs and includes targeted efforts to, one, address disparities by increasing subsidies targeted efforts to, one, address disparities by increasing subsidies for families with low income, two, increasing family engagement and involvement in shaping program and policy, and, three, expanding culturally-affirming programs and quality curriculum aligned with best practices. So today's presentation, we're gonna focus on one aspect of the Whole Child Bright Futures Initiative, and that's multilingual learners, to inform emerging work aligned with objectives. And we do have them on the slide, 3.1 of increasing the annual percentage of children prenatal to age five in LA County receiving publicly-funded early care and education, and then Objective 3.3, increasing the annual percentage of households with young children receiving culturally-affirming services. At the November meeting, we are bringing back community partners, and we'll continue to focus on this initiative and hear from grantee partners about the work that they're doing on advocacy and systems change aligned with this initiative. So for today's presentation, I want to remind the board, and I mentioned it earlier, that there is a new grade level for four-year-olds in the K-12 public system, Transitional Kinder, or what most commonly is referred to as TK. It's come up from you, our commissioners, the presentations from our policy team. And given our long history and our expertise in early care education and this change in the landscape, we, and the state's commitment to multilingual learning where they have invested resources, we think that it's really important to think about the quality of curriculum and how to impact, how to have a systemic approach that impacts, that focuses on cultural competence to ensure that families with young children, especially those in high-need communities, since we talked about the Equity Index, can access high-quality programs in their communities. So the objectives that make up the Whole Child Bright Futures Initiative were developed in response to families, in response to system leaders and stakeholders, who during the strategic planning asked that we go beyond what Carla mentioned of our first goal, which is really focused on basic needs, and our second goal, which is looking at nurturing relationships and vibrant environments, to children thriving, right? And how we can build on strengths of their families and communities, inclusive of racial, ethnic, and multilingual diversity. So I am gonna quote our president and CEO, Carla Plittis-How, who in recent remarks said that "Education must be about recognizing and celebrating gifts, including honoring the cultural roots and languages that children bring with them into the classroom." And, you know, to me, this quote and the statement is really important, because it was also addressing the decades of policies in our education system that discouraged and actually punished some children for bringing their culture and language into the classroom.
That's right.
And, you know, there are best practices and lessons that we have learned in early education as First Five LA and all of our work. And with the introduction of Transitional Kinder, there are gonna be more insights of what it means for young children. And so for us, we really want to think about effective programs and quality curriculum for young children. So this is why we enlisted Dua for her extensive expertise in dual-language learning and in philanthropy. We're gonna incorporate lessons in our work from the work that we have done on dual-language learners, the campaign. If you haven't seen our PSA, the video that we have been sharing that, we will have it at the November meeting. But for us, it's really important to learn from that campaign. There is an evaluation that's taking place, and that campaign is being led by Quality Start LA with participation from some of your entities. So Dua is working with us on a landscape analysis, which, you know, she'll share the early data and analysis. And we're also to the implementation priorities that JR mentioned. There is a team of individuals that are leading this work internally, so that, you know, we can think about the role that we can play, not just in resourcing or providing catalytic support, but also in how we partner with entities that are doing this important work. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Dua. She'll introduce herself, talk a little bit about the landscape and data, and then we'll open it up for questions and conversation.
Thank you, Adia. Okay, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Well, first of all, thank you for letting me join you today. I had like flashbacks of my time in DC, and I really loved being in DC at the time, it was under Obama, because of the ability to engage in a way that really is about people having experiences on the ground and bringing that to systems.
Yeah.
And so this issue is particularly close to my heart, because I came to this country as a refugee. So I'm ethnically Hmong, and I grew up in Detroit alongside many Black communities. And it wasn't for a very long time that I realized, oh, the cross-racial solidarity work is about the experiences and the joint opportunities for communities to engage and learn. So I later on went into a professional career around helping and supporting communities, but most recently, I was at Sabrato Philanthropies for almost seven years. And we launched and created statewide with investments in LA focused around multilingual students and multilingual learners. Over that time, we invested over, probably a little over $100 million to help build some of the infrastructure that exists currently today. So I'm incredibly excited to be here with you all. I'm gonna start a little bit with some of the background statistics. I'm gonna jump through a few things, so we can make sure we open it up for discussion. And it's a bit of a hard pivot, because we've been talking so much today about everything that's going on, which is very heavy, and rightfully so. But it is a good place to land on a spot around the opportunity in the future, which hopefully we don't forget, because our communities are so resilient, even in the midst of all these things going on. So, next slide. Okay, go, next one. Just high level, what do we mean by multilingual learners? So they are young children whose primary language is not English. And often today, we're gonna be talking about language, but when we talk about language, we mean language, we mean culture, we mean pride and family. Language is often a proxy for that, but it isn't the only thing. And today, we are using language as a part of that conversation, but recognize that we'll be oscillating between talking a lot about different concepts around culture and language and pride. In California, 60% of children ages zero to five speak another language at home. So I, I mean, I really want to stop and have people digest that. I think people don't realize that the majority of our little kids in this state and the future of the state are people who speak other languages, who are from other communities, but who also have so much to contribute. And they belong, in many ways, to different, keep going, you can jump. They belong to households that speak all different kinds of languages and represent different types of immigration status. So this is just a high-level representation of the languages spoken by multilingual learners.
Is this LA County or statewide?
This is statewide, first. And then, but we'll go to LA next. For purposes of you all, it's important to note that I think there's an assumption that it's Spanish-only, but it's actually a broad swath of languages. The majority of these students actually, and these children, live disproportionately in LA and the surrounding regions. So you all have a very powerful opportunity and role here to elevate and use your platform to partner on this. So, next slide. Okay, let's take a little bit of a closer look at LA. And here, we're highlighting some of the unique profiles of each of these communities, but also it is to speak about how the uniqueness can actually be an opportunity to leverage working together. Even under that Latino umbrella, you have dozens of ethnic groups, right? So often, language itself is not enough to represent, but it's talking about heritage and where people are coming from. In the Black community here, often, people don't realize that you have very large numbers of Black immigrants.
Thank you.
One in four Black residents are either immigrants or children of immigrants in LA County. And you are a resettlement area for many Asylees, many refugees. And because of that, I think people often think of only one profile, but that's not true. And then even for Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander communities, it's pretty important to notice that, even in your earlier graph without the data disaggregated, you can think that these families are all wealthy. They're all at Harvard or Yale, but that's actually not true. You have large proportions of Southeast Asian refugees, like my own experience here living, and large proportions of undocumented Korean-Americans here, too. So you'll see that this conversation around language really translates across many communities. Next slide. Here is just a rough look at language and isolation in LA County. And you'll notice that over 10 years, it hasn't changed very much. Families are still very isolated in homes based on language. And that's because if they don't have the opportunity to engage in a system and actually use their home language as an advantage, and not just be about learning English, you see a system that kind of repeats itself. You will also notice that for Black communities, there was a huge jump, almost double, between 20 and 21. And that continues to increase in this region because of the immigrants that are coming in. Okay, next slide. Here, you've already seen probably this slide. This is Manuel Pastor's slide on immigrants, immigration in this region, in this county. And you can see that all races are, they transcend against all different types of immigration. So you can have naturalized, undocumented, lawful, permanent residents, and they're all represented in different parts of the community. Yeah. Okay, I'm gonna flip quickly to an opportunity, and I'm gonna read this. "So multilingual students are more than their adversities. They are resilient individuals with demonstrated capabilities to leverage their unique capacities to obtain academic, linguistic, social, and emotional achievement that extends beyond the classroom to enrich the communities they navigate." Okay, next slide. And the reason I say that is because people, for a very long time, thought it was a deficit to speak a different language. The world is shifting, and so is California. So to the right, jobs are now seeking people who speak multiple languages. We're not talking about just tech, we're talking about healthcare, we're talking about customer service. On the left, you'll see what the loss is for families who don't have home language and English. So they need that English component to increase their income. And in fact, speaking a home language and speaking English will increase their household income on average around somewhere between $15,000 to $20,000. So these two charts are looking at the importance of speaking both English, but also speaking another language. And that's really the dynamic in the world we're living in now, and a place and an opportunity where I think LA and First Five LA can be supportive. Next slide. And Carla has mentioned this. There's a lot of research now about brain science and what it means to speak multiple languages. And it means working with children really early on. Once they learn it early on and they maintain it, they're able to maintain it much more easily than if I were to go try to learn another language right now. That's, I think, the niche for First Five LA, is really focusing on these students early and noticing that these students, they multitask better, they're cognitively stronger. All those research materials have been proven to be true. And then it carries all the way to your older years, even beyond childhood. So just quickly, we talk a lot about what is happening in California because California is a target, but I think it's also because California is a leader. Hence, you're targeted, but it's a leader. LA and California, and in many ways, First Five LA can build upon supportive public policies that already exist. So I heard you all talk earlier today about community schools. Billions of dollars, unlike any other state, investing in holistic places for children to show up. Or we have the Early Childhood Master Plan, like already a goal from the state about where counties and the local level can really invest in children early. All of these actually have components around multilingualism. They've already surfaced and recognized that speaking multiple languages and uplifting these students or these children at a very young age is gonna be important. And then finally, a note for LA, there are really strong stakeholders here. The conversation about philanthropy, partnerships, coalitions, and nonprofits that already exist for First Five to build off of versus start from new is really the goal in this work, and feels timely and ripe for First Five to be involved. So I'm just gonna open it up for discussion, because in this next phase, we're doing more of the, looking at some of the low-hanging fruit opportunities for First Five to really just partner and build off of. And would love to hear more about what considerations you would like for us and the team to be thinking about as we move to this next phase. And then we plan to report back in November.
It's always, I love it when you put the question on the slide, so I can refer back to it.
I apologize, my first commission meeting.
It's okay, just, and I wouldn't have said it if they hadn't been there earlier, because you all ask us to really think hard. It's a long question, and I have to be reminded of as I look up. So.
Sure.
I have to go get my kids. But before I go get them, I'll just say that I agree. I think for a lot of us possibly sitting here at this table, this is a very personal thing, because English was, I mean, Spanish was my first language. And I remember just how much shame there was in speaking it, but then also, on the flip side, if I wasn't speaking it well, shame there, too, right?
Yeah.
And how we, I am fortunate enough to have my children enrolled in a dual-immersion program.
Beautiful.
Daughters moved on to a dual-immersion middle school, which I didn't know existed. And I think just the more kind of support we have around, you know, dual-language or multi-language preschools, I feel like we're starting to see a lot more of growth of dual immersion, whether it's Spanish, English in our case, or other languages. But really supporting that from a really early start. There are plenty of programs where some of the teachers obviously speak another language, but it's different if it's fully embedded into their programming. And I think another part of that, you'd mentioned being culturally responsive. And one of our local programs, they have, their menu that they serve the children is absolutely amazing. I mean, they're eating tamales, they're eating pupusas, right? Like, they're eating very culturally-relevant food that is cooked there in their kitchen and then distributed to the children. So, one, just thank you. And then, two, looking forward to kind of continuing that discussion, because I think that this is definitely a place in which we're seeing more momentum, kind of at the K-12 level. And so seeing how we can really think about and support for our littles, I think is really important. And I apologize, but I do have to go get my kids.
See, that's why I recognize the look on your face, it's like, it's gonna be a dollar a minute very soon. I had a flashback. Commissioner.
Thank you for this presentation. I love, I really appreciated all of it. I have these discussions with my students every semester about languages and how important they are. And I love what you said about the job piece, because that's something that I always forget to highlight, is that that's your, this is one of your, this is part of your cultural competency, right, that you can offer as someone who is multilingual. Currently, LAUSD, as far as I know, both my kids are enrolled in LAUSD. I just got this email yesterday that had little-to-no information, sorry, not sorry, on world languages and cultures. And it was something about giving multi-literacy awards to children that have, and it, but that was kind of it. It was like, we're giving out awards, and here's a Zoom that you can go to to find out more. And there's this very big, strong push in the district, but I really, there's a disconnect between what is, what do we, what do we want? What do we, what's the aim? And I don't think that the administrators or teachers really know either. They're just told to promote it. So I'd love to, I'd love, I know what they've done in Long Beach is very different than what they've done in LAUSD, and so I'd love to kind of filter that way, if we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Yeah, I do want, I want to thank you for this presentation and for uplifting and sharing all of this data, especially about non-Spanish speakers that are also English learners. And something that always comes to mind when we talk about multilanguage learners is the fact that in education, from what I've seen, is that there are two silos that operate where English-language learners are seen as having a deficit.
Yes.
But students in dual-immersion programs are seen as having, you know, an asset. So while dual-immersion programs are celebrated, English-language learners are remediated. And it changes their perception of the value of having a home language that's not English. And so I think part of the work we have to do is change the mindset of the educators that are that are going into the classrooms to see bilingualism as an asset that they can celebrate through cultural affirmations and also use the, what we've learned from the dual-immersion programs that have been wildly successful to help reclassify the students who are English learners and not try to like eliminate that language, but allow them to also be bilingual and meet their goals as well. So I don't know how exactly it can be done, but I feel like there needs to be a convergence of the two programs because they're essentially supposed to be producing the same outcome, where you have a student who is able to retain their home language, whether it's English or a non-English language, and gain that second language. And so part of that is really, I think, a mindset shift for all of us.
Yeah, I will say, I am mad, I have a dream that California will be a state where every child will speak multiple languages. And imagine if you were a child who spoke another language, you entered the school system having credit already for some reason because you were already speaking that. It would really change, I think, the way that we look at not just students who speak other languages, but immigrants. Like, it would improve the ability for us all to be able to see what diversity can do and bring to a school.
Beautifully said. Any other comments? I'm just reminded of my wonderful experience, I've been there twice now, this incredible childcare center run by KYCC where it's English, Korean, Spanish immersion. And to see Black, Korean, Latino, and white children, all crisscrossing languages to each other at 3 and 4 is something to behold. It can be done when we set it up to do it that way. Any other questions or comments? Any public comment on this agenda item?
Confirming there are no public comments on this item.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the information, lovely to meet you. All right, with that, let's open it up for general public comment.
Confirming there are no public comments in general.
Ms. Bo, where is the public today?
You know, I think the board said enough for everybody today, so they decided not to show up.
Touche on that point. Hearing none, let's see, our next regular board meeting will pick back up on Thursday, November 13th. Have a lovely Halloween and thank you so much. We stand adjourned. Thank you.